We are starting the City Council Regular General Meeting. At the same time, we'll also have the Speaker conducting this evening. And we have Pat Carlyle, United Methodist Church, that will be leading us in prayer, followed by Dr. Don Brown, Councilmember, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise.
I invite you to take a slow, deep breath. Join me in prayer. Oh God, before we engage in the business of this evening, we pause to clear our mind and gather our energy. As we begin this meeting, I thank you for all those whose contributions have made this evening's works possible. For each person who had time to come to this gathering, we ask for your guidance and direction, and especially so for those who serve as councilmembers, for Mayor Boils, Mayor Protem, and members Brand, Nicole, Nickle, and Endell. Help us to bear in mind that all of us are here because we care about this community. May we work together, ensure the good, and to help make this place a safe, healthy place enlisted with, enlisted which to work, and play, learn, and live. Amen.
Please join me. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, we have a couple presentations. The first one is the Proclamation for Denim Day. Do I have a councilmember to the proclamation for Denim Day?
Well, I have a Canadian wife, and so everyone knows I'm being tuxedoed of denim. Glad I got a couple people listening tonight. Who's accepting this proclamation, by the way?
No one.
No one is? Man wearing denim tonight, we'll make him a... As the United States Department has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Overviol- Overviolence has declared April 24, 2019, as Denim Day in Los Angeles County. And whereas benefits are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault remain a serious issue in our society, and whereas harmful attitudes about rape and sexual assault allow those crimes to persist, victims to be revictimized, and where Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were also instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about rape and sexual assault, and the problem that many in society remain disturbed by the form aspect to issues of assault and forcible rape. As every two minutes, someone in America is sexually assaulted, approximately one in six William- women are reduced in their life, and youths under eighteen account for four percent of all reported. And whereas with proper education on the matter, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing incidents alarming and physiologically damaging crime. And what members of the City Council strongly support the efforts of peace over violence to educate persons in our community about the impact of rape and sexual assault in Southern California. Now therefore, for the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California hereby proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and designate April 24, 2019, as Denim Day, and urges to wear jeans on April 24, 2019, to help communicate a message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape.
Thank you, Councilman Nickle. I learned about that this evening. It's a great program. I had no idea that was... Thank you. Dr. Brand.
My proclamation goes like this. As organ, tissue, marrow, and donation, life-giving acts recognize as expressions of compassion to those in need, and whereas more than one hundred thirteen thousand individuals nationwide, and more than twenty-one thousand in California are currently on the National Organ Transplant Waiting List, and on average, twenty people die each day while waiting due to the shortage of donated organs. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic and African-American communities, whereas more than six hundred thousand units of blood per year needed to meet the need in California, and whereas at any given time, six thousand patients are in need of volunteer bone marrow donors, and whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestine can save up to eight lives, donation of tissue can even heal the lives of up to seventy-five others, single blood donation can help three people in need. And whereas millions of lives each year are healed by donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood, and whereas the spirit of giving and decision to donate are not restricted by age or condition, and whereas over fifteen million Californians have signed up with the state authorized Donate Life California Donor Registry to ensure their wish of an organ, eye, and tissue donor are honored, and whereas California residents sign up with the Donate Life California Donor Registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license ID card at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the City Council of the City of El Segundo, California, in recognition of National Donate Life Month, hereby proclaim the month of April, 2019, as DMV Donate Life California Month in El Segundo, and in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check us when applying for or renewing their license ID card, or by signing up at www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or www.dunvidaCalifornia.org. And receiving this tonight, one-legged Ambassador Kathy Joyce. Is Kathy here? Great.
Picture them, maybe. Okay, just a couple of you. There we go. Kathy, can you hold it? I want in. There it is. Thank you, sir. One more? Good. One more. Excellent. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mayor Boils, City Council, and the City of El Segundo for supporting us with Donate Life Month. As you all know, my name is Kathy Joyce, but what you don't know about me is that I am a nurse, and my first job at the end, I took care of liver patients pre and post-transplant. I have a brother that is a two-time kidney recipient, and a cousin is a liver recipient. I had a girlfriend that had a stroke and died, and she became a... I know this works. You've read in the proclamation about registering to become a donor? We ask everyone that they register to become a donor. And there are over twenty-one thousand people within our state waiting for a life-changing organ. To make a visual, if we took all of those people and sat beside the forum, there would be four thousand people waiting to get in. It really is important for people to register to become donors. We also like to invite you and everyone else, the entire audience, to the 16th Annual Donate Life Run Walk, which is going to be held on Saturday, April 27, at Cal State University, Long Beach. Again, I'd like to thank you all for supporting Donate Life Month.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Member Nickle?
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Member Brunt?
Present.
Mayor Protem Presta?
Here.
Here. Okay, now's the time and place for public communications.
Mr. Mayor, Madam, Mayor Protem, uh, thank you for this opportunity. I am proudly wearing denim, and I have been an organ donor since you had to peel off that little pink dot, remember, and put that on your driver's license. I think it's... I've seen that on my arm also. I wish it was an opt-out rather than opt-in. I supported that in the past. I think I could get a lot more, but that is very worthwhile. I'm here to talk to you tonight about item four. It's just about the scoot- electric scooters. This isn't a critical life and death issue, and I didn't come down and borrow it. It was the kind of thing where I felt like if I didn't kick myself later, because this is my shot. So, I thought the rollout the first time was disastrous, and I thought you guys made a really good decision when you put a hold on it. My first experience with the scooters here in town, I was, I was driving up Grand, and this middle-aged lady shooting out a side street in front of me, and fortunately, I drove really slow, hit the brakes, before she ate it right in front of me in the street, and just planted right in front of me on the scooter. And I went, "What is that?" And then when I went to the bank, I saw them littered all over the sidewalk, literally, and I've got... I bring pictures, and I thought, "You've all seen them. You don't need me to show you." I went over to Right-Aid. I mean, this literally was the first morning, because they overnight, like mushrooms. And I, I mean, I'm saying the word literally, but I was so astounded, I watched a lady have to physically go out in the street near that bus stop of Right, because there were scooters laying on the ground, and she couldn't use the sidewalk. Now, I know we're gonna have scooters, okay? And I, I'm not a night, I've got an iPhone in my pocket, I've got three iPads, I drove a car here, plug in. I get it, I am not the old man screaming, "Get off my lawn." But this is our infrastructure, and leaving products scattered all over the city is not a business plan. I'm sorry, it's not. It's arrogance, and it's disrespectful, and it's no way to do business. I've been to other cities, I've been to London. We use the bikes, mental bikes. You go out, you swipe your credit card, you take the bike, bike responsible for it, you put it back in another dock, and then they charge you. We're gonna have these, I get it. I don't think it's, think it's to ask to find your scooter, and when you're done with it, if you have to block, it's in a designated spot. You shouldn't be able to leave them all over the place. I'd like to ask literally, and I'm not being facetious, at what is their product left in the middle of the sidewalk, my garbage? Seriously. If I rode my bike here tonight, I left my bicycle sitting in front, in, in the middle of the sidewalk, I have no expectation it's gonna be there. That's, it's, it's a hazard, it's garbage. If somebody leaves their e-scooter on my front yard, and I've got picture of residential areas, am I allowed to throw that away? I mean, at what point have they just discarded their product, and it's now a public nuisance? They can dispose of it. They're all, I ride the bike path from here to my mom's house in Culver City all the time, they're scattered everywhere. I see the same ones abandoned. There are safety issues, uh, there was this, and I'm sure you guys have researched, I'm sure you have, there was a study of two ERs done by UCLA, this is, this is legit, it's not, it's not jacked up, and it was September 2017 to August 2018, in just two ERs, there were thirty-nine people treated for scooterage, a third of them were told to buy ambulance. Eight percent of those were pedestrian. Now, we're doing a great, you guys, doing a great job. Downtown is booked, packed on the weekend, packed at lunch. Throw scooters in the... I don't know. Our sidewalks are full. So, here's what I say. We built this disstructure, okay? People of El Segundo, these sidewalks are our infrastructure. They wanna monetize that, okay? And, and one is owned by Uber, or multi-billion dollar tech companies, they wanna monetize that, get our cut. I want fifty percent of the profits. Doesn't suit our business model, go somewhere else. Because they're coming here, I don't know any other business in town, if I was, if I had a business on Main Street and I was paying business tax, I would be irritated. I don't know what I can do to our sidewalks, I don't, maybe I'll sell Christmas trees next Christmas, and I'll just scatter down the town on the sidewalks. It's not a place of business. That's our public conveyance, and our people paid for it. If you want to monetize it, you do it by our rules. So I'm just gonna keep that in my mind, keep the safety of our people, our mobility. We've got a good thing going, isn't another... Okay, it's very small, it's very contained. Even Manhattan Beach, certainly not Santa Monica, we're not Beverly Hills. Slow, slow think about it, I know, in conjunction with the, with the rest of the beach cities, it doesn't have to be one-size-fits-all, make sure it fits El Segundo, and don't let them just assume that our sidewalk is their place of business. We don't have to conform to their business model, we have to conform to our business model. And if they want to make money, I want a cut. When I was sitting where you are, the line is, "How best for the citizens?" So that's what these, these need to be all about. What's best for our people? What's in it for El Segundo? What's in it for Lyft, or the Disruptors, right? Or Bird? So that's all I would say, is keep that in mind, and we all saw it everywhere, they're scattered, they're dangerous, old people can't walk on the sidewalk. But I appreciate your time, I know you'll take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Can you have the rest of the data, Jim Bolgerides? Thank you. That's okay.
Bolgerides, go drive.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Boils, members. My name is Nancy Downs, I'm with OCEANA. I'm an organizer here in Southern California, and I'm speaking on agenda fifty-five. I'm here today to thank you for your consideration of the resolution opposing new offshore oil and gas drilling in our Pacific Coast. Why? You'll be joining over ninety municipalities that have passed resolutions over the past two years. When I started with OCEANA, there were ten in August of 2017, so those eighty resolutions have just passed in the past couple of years. That includes the San Diego, of LA, City of Manhattan Beach, Culver City, Sea City Way, Malibu, countless others along the West Coast. I get nervous, so I actually brought an excerpt from Orange County Business Council Lucy Dunn wrote an op-ed last March. I'll keep it brief. The Secretary of State's draft proposal for 2019 to 24, 24, plans to study and receive input on seven potential leases off the Southern California coast. Whether or these leases might occur in federal waters isn't clear yet, we're expecting posed, excuse me, the proposed program in a matter of weeks. So that's coming out very soon. What is clear is that American energy independence is not dependent on the exploitation of California's line. Let's look at the facts. The great strides this country has nearing energy independence occurred during numerous prolonged periods when full offshore drilling bans were in place. If you didn't still shop when I hear it, we've not issued a new oil drilling state of California since 1969, and there has not been a new lease to explore or develop federal water in the Pacific since 1984. So, that we've made it as far as we have with more than thirty years of federal offshore drilling bans in place suggests that Southern California is critical to our energy independence, and should be part of any future plans for new federal oil and gas leases. We can't afford to jeopardize our clean coast economy. OCEANA has done an economic study here in Southern California and the West Coast. Our clean coast economy, that's hotels, tourism, rest hospitality, surfing, kayaking, this is why we all live here, supports nearly a hundred thousand jobs, and generates forty-two point three billion in GDP every year. I noticed in your El Segundo fiscal year, I think 2017, you've earned eleven just from your TOT, your transient occupancy tax. People are coming here to enjoy the beautiful, clean coastline, the surfing, the restaurants, the hotels. And so this vital economic, or the pristine environment and clean waters that supports this economy cannot be jeopardized by welcoming new offshore leases in Southern California, and strongly support you passing this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor Boils, Honorable City Council. I know most of you, just for the record, my name is Mike Hario, I'm the Public Affairs Manager for SoCal Gas, a sub to the City of El Segundo, and I'm here to talk to you about item sixty-five on the agenda. I just want to thank you for your consideration of the action that's recommended by the Environmental Committee to adopt a resolution opposing state legislation to main role of our energy solutions. The proposal, which did not pass a legislation in full year, would have required all new buildings in the state built after 2022 to be all-electric, and that would have required existing buildings to be upgraded to all-electric by 2030. This proposal did not pass in full, you can, you can be assured that similar proposals, excuse me, similar proposals coming out in the future. California will electrify everything regardless of the cost and price of its citizens. Excuse me, like madness, I scream a lot. So, so what is that cost? In addition to not allowing El Segundo residents to heat their homes, heat their water, or cook meals, dry clothes economically and safely using natural gas, employers in the city would not be allowed to cook meals at restaurants, heat buildings, or maintain their industrial access. That's not to mention the resiliency of just having one source of energy. The economic stability of these offices and businesses could be threatened, forcing homeowners to replace their natural gas appliances, and this would include furnace, stove, water heaters, dryers, and more, at an estimated cost of seventy-two hundred dollars to the homeowner. This would not include any costs that would be required to upgrade your electrical system to meet the additional load. About how much you pay for electricity to cool your home in the summer, and relatively little you pay for natural gas to heat your home in winter, imagine paying those high electric bills around because you are forced to heat with electricity, with electricity, and do everything else you know that you now do with natural gas with electricity. And just to be clear, SoCal Gas does not oppose electrification. If you want to use only electric appliances in your home, that should be a consumer's choice. The fact is virtually every home in Segundo already has electricity and natural gas balance, and that's a balance that's that California's joy, and they want to maintain that balance and this balance to continue. So they should not have force to utilize one source of energy over another. So the alternative to electrification from meeting the state's greenhouse goals, and that's biogas and renewable natural gas, renewable natural gas, organic sources such as green waste, wastewater, food, agricultural waste. We can capture some of this gas now, we can put it into the, our pipeline instead of allowing it to go into the atmosphere and inject it into our pipelines. If we just inject sixteen percent of renewable natural gas, it will have the same effect on greenhouse gas emission as California, and at a significantly higher cost than one, and this is a goal that's realistic to achieve by 2030. California, we have a toolbox of a lot of energy sources, solar, we have wind, we have electricity, we have natural gas, we have hydrogen, and many more new technologies that are slowly, you know, coming to fruition. So we should not limit our choices in Cal, California, to just electricity. So with a balanced energy approach, which we give our greenhouse goals, we can preserve choice and minimize disruption and costs. So I thank you for listening, and I have some fact sheets, if I could leave with all of you, that's okay?
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Mayor Boils, councilmembers, Kevin McGee, I'm a resident of El Segundo, and I wanted to come and speak today on, in support of item C for the pilot project for mobility devices. I'm a big supporter of mobility devices and using technology to leverage because of their convenience and their environmental benefit, and just... convenience and their environmental benefit and just because they're around and with that said, I fully support the, the ban that you guys moved forward with. I think it was necessary to move forward, we have to do it the right way. And I think that studying it, the pilot project, correct way to do that, and I think they're doing it in coordination with the South Bay Cities, the appropriate way to do that. But I did want to bring up concerns with the, with the pilot project. First, I would like to see, to say that the pilot project worked or didn't work, that it resolved all of the questions that, that as a city has. So that's number one. Number, I, I would like to have some concrete guidelines on parking and payment locations where they put them back in the morning. I, I don't, I don't want the community with them in neighborhood streets or clustered on a street corner. If designated areas for them on, maybe within the street, take up parking spaces as long as those are designated and they're not allowed to be cluttering any sidewalks, I think that would be beneficial for a lot of people. I think that is an issue, I think that we could work with the, the operators of them, do what they have to do, but when it comes down to it, it's harder to enforce users. So if we can get the users to be enforced by, by not letting them add or, or what have you. I think that's the bigger issue for enforcement is, is the users and not the operators. And lastly, while we work with this, I, I think that we are unique because there are four, three cities involved, they're, they're contiguous and they would generally go together. We, on the other hand, we have the extra variation of LAX and Playa Vista that may not operate in the guideline. So with that, I, I do want to express my support for item C four. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGai.
Good evening, Mayor Boiles, City Council members. My name is Tim Harder. I'm with Partnerships at Bird and I'm here to share comments on item C from today. Appreciate the thoughtful work the staff have put into the proposed pilot program before you tonight. We appreciate the, the City of El Segundo decisions through regional regulations that adhere to safety and best practices while acknowledging the use and value of scooters as a viable first and last option. From reviewing the proposed South Bay docking work before you, Bird is ready to deliver on many of its requirements as conceptually laid out. This is why we are asking for your support to move forward the pilot program. Please, moving this forward will not result in scooters showing up tomorrow. This is a process. We are simply asking that you allow staff to begin, begin moving the RFP process forward. Because of the time we were in El Segundo, we already have a lot of students and sea of bird riders who live here and are looking for multimodal mental transit to get from point A to point B. We learned a lot in El Segundo, we made some mistakes, we know that. That releasing is showing us that one-third of e-scooter riders would have jumped in a car if e-scooter available. Data that we, the time we were in El Segundo showed us that people were using birds to connect to and from, that we are collecting in cities also shows about thirty percent of our riders bird as a first, last mile solution. Imagine all the folks we connect with scooters in the green line. In the U.S., forty percent trips miles or less. That's you jumping in your car to go to a movie, prescription. Think of all the tricks you can do on a scooter. Average bird distance is four miles across the country. We are now seeing burn lift jump the e-scooter industry. No surprise, we are taking market share away from car trips. We are ninety-five percent aligned, in agreement with El Segundo last year, we just couldn't reach that final step. But the regulations created by the South Bay Working Group are a great starting point for the pilot program. I actually started those conversations with South Bay Cog and got this actually moving forward because I thought of all the regional things there are going to be issues with. While we support the South Bay Working Group and the guidelines that the staff have developed, we feel that we need to move the pilot program in El Segundo and not wait for the others of other cities. Our fear is that we have to wait for other city councils in the area, it'll be another six to nine months before South Bay. That's another six to nine months of cars gassing there. It's our hope that you'll direct staff to begin using the South Bay guidelines. Hermosa Beach is expected to be taking up the same next week, Manhattan Beach the week after. If El Segundo is moving forward, too, we'll want to move forward in partnership to have a regional program and keep sharing mobility in the South Bay. We are now in over one hundred cities. You guys were number four when we launched last year. During that time, we've learned a lot to meet the unique needs of cities we operate, design technological solutions that were discussed tonight. In short, we're now incentivizing parking locations. Yes, we now direct ride park in approved locations working with staff. We can create geofence areas to have no parking in the city, including working with those businesses mentioned in tonight for preferred parking locations. These are just a few example things we can do in El Segundo of chosen during the RFP process. We ask that staff to do craft and RFP process with focus on safety and mobility and begin a program using the South Bay guidelines before you tonight. We are not expecting anything. Your staff have put over six months of time into working with surrounding beaches and they have done their research. I would like to thank Paul for all the work he and the South Working Group have put into the dockless guidelines and thank you very much for having me speak on behalf of the board. We look forward to having an opportunity again, once again, to the El Segundo community. Have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Mr.
Good evening, my name is Chris Kegel and I'm with the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. I'm here to deliver your second quarter report and I have it right here and I wanted to point out a couple of things. And you'll read this in this issue and profiles all of the working, I think you'll find it interesting. And also, we hot off the press a new report we just did with the Cal State Dominguez Sales on the impact of the blockchain in the South Bay economy. We're having an event, and they're going to present their findings on that. The event's at the DoubleTree in twenty-eight AM, it's free to the public if you'd like to come. Also, to let the public know, of course, we do, we help people find jobs and help businesses find workers, we create career pathways for people to get into paid jobs. And right now, our employers, a lot of them, especially in bioscience and aerospace, are looking for internships. So if you have Cavkid or college-age young adults that are interested in getting into companies in the South Bay, in those, those areas, we're tying these internships to our new pre-apprenticeship we've developed. We recently got a grant from Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas to develop apprenticeship around bioscience. So that meeting's on Thursday if you have an interest in that, eight-thirty AM, the South Bay Work Investment Board. Also, adults, if you're interested in, in working locally, Raytheon, carrying an enormous amount of people, great place to work if you're looking for a job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel. Appreciate all you're doing to match employers and employees.
Evening, Council members. My name is Kurt Frye. As you know, I'm part of the South Bay United Water Polo Club and also that I am the only club represented here for the pool, to let you know I believe in what we're doing. I had a great meeting today with, we exchanged a lot of good ideas. It's my attention that you may not know the history of what has been going on with this process. And while I understand it's a very difficult process and I, and I advise with that, I do think that it is important that council, based on where we are today, understand the facts that have been going on here. So I'll try to get quickly. On January seventh, we were told by Jeanette and Eric that we would be given pool time, new pool, from six-nine, Monday through Thursday. We said, okay, it's not what we wanted, we wanted the whole pool, but they said, okay. In that same meeting, if we could take Fridays from six-six to nine, which is an undesirable time, and we said, okay. Weeks later on February first, we were told that our hours had been reduced to thirty-nine without explanation. We told them in that meeting that we gave fifteen dollar an hour published rate. She said we're not allowed to revise our proposal. She then later wrote and said that she would bring up this conversation in the two-five council meeting and unfortunately, this did not happen. I later found through an Alpha Board member that they were allowed to revise their proposal back in January. We were not. In the council meeting on two-nineteen, Parks and Rec proposed to council that the offer rate, the eight to nine hours, or eight to nine PM rate, be increased from sixty dollars an hour to a hundred dollars an hour. At that time, as well as now, South Bay United is, is the only club requesting to use the pool from eight to nine. We had no confirmation for that time and the city voted to raise that rate anyway. That is a little ironic. In the same council meeting, Mr. Nickel and Mr. Band agreed that South Bay United and Alpha should be receiving priority time at the new pool. On February twenty-sixth, in a meeting that I had, Meredith, Jeanette, and Eric, Meredith indicated yet another revised proposal for South Bay United and that we were now only given half of the pool from seven-fifteen to eight and the full pool from eight to nine with the increased rate and the plunge from six to seven. At the three-five council meeting, Jeanette clarified to this council that South Bay would only really receive forty-five minutes at the pool and not the full hour. Mr. Nickel flipped support, South Bay United continued to be discriminated as an optics program with no explanation as to why we are there and no explanation as to how we would get out of the pool. This optics do not look good and after the fifty residents that were from El Segundo come into this council meeting showing you that Trojan Water Polo is a better program, this is a little bit concerning. Today, South Bay United has not heard the Parks and Rec as to what's going on with this, with the pool. We have been trying to give you our money since back in December and I think I met with you guys back in October of eighteen as well. Now, rumor mill, hearing yet again that our time is being changed, that our, are being cut and Trojan is going to split time with us. Our Water Polo Club has about a hundred and thirty people, thirty percent of those are El Segundo residents. We currently provide two full scholarships to El Segundo residents and in five years of the club, we've probably had eight full-time scholarships dedicated to El Segundo residents. We have also, over the past several years, since I've taken over the club, been promoting joint promotion of local businesses here in El Segundo. We have a discount, we work and promote El Segundo business. We don't just promise to do these things just to reach peak hours at the pool. We already do this. We recruit and we promote El Segundo residents in this water polo. We're not promising to promote El Segundo residents. We already do this. We're here for the right reasons. We are here for the citizens of El Segundo and if, like I said, if you haven't noticed, the only club that continues to care about the city of El Segundo, and I think that's representative, we're the only club tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Boiles and City Council. My name is Lance Drew, seven-fourteen Bungalow Drive, and I am here to talk about the Aquatics Center and the selection process, but as a, not for any particular club. A few things I want to bring, first is, you have a conflict of interest on your aquatic subject. This individual has a child at Simser Beach Cities and his spouse are directors of that club. As a matter of fact, at the grand opening of the Aquatics Center, this is how she was, how she identified herself to the reporter and how it was in the article. This is a fact. It's also a fact that this person told you of his affiliation right from the beginning and was upfront about it, or denied it, so I'm not putting this on him. It's not legally a conflict because there is no financial interest involved, however, I think there is a chance that the public will see this differently. Also a fact that Alpha Aquatics called this conflict out to you in February of twenty-one. It was subsequently explained away with the reply of, don't worry, he is supporting Alpha and Beach Cities. Interestingly enough, I see no mention of any support of any water portal clubs in that. There was also a letter sent from his spouse to the city, now a public document. I'll take excerpts from the letter that stood out to me. Beach offers a more comprehensive program. Alpha is still developing as a swim club, however, City's is already established, already an established swim club that is ready for a regional community aquatic center and will help us fund it. They, Alpha, are a good team with good people, however, I do not think that they have reached the, to run a premier, for a premier facility. Based on my experience in the past seven years with these clubs and teams, I feel Beach Cities is the right choice for the three-hour peak timeframe. They are here for El Segundo and the South Bay. Now here's the thing, I have absolutely no, no idea that she is right or wrong in this because honestly, I don't know that much about the swim community. It sounds like a very informed opinion from someone who may know, considering that she served on two swim boards. However, can you tell me, or how can you tell me, there is no conflict of interest here? The president is part of advising and recommending which teams, sports, get what pool time and is your main advisor for aquatics. He said on the RFP process and graded each proposal. I'm sorry, this whole process is compromised. Next thing I want to talk about, two aspects from your new criteria. Number one, consider current and residents. This should be measured based on the, like every sport, every other club, every other organization paying for time anywhere in El Segundo or any other city in the South Bay for, pay for that. Two, prioritize programs with greatest number of participants during peak times. Shouldn't this read greatest number of, of pool participants? When did density become more important than residency? Why is density even part of this equation, especially with zero effect on the finances? I have checked all of our other city facility rental requirements and I don't see the word density anywhere. However, I do see the word residency everywhere. So why are we making this rule up for the Aquatics Center only? Water Polo Clubs, Trojan, you, the truth. I'm just going to give you for the uninitiated really what it's about. Here's a fact, Jovan Vavich, disgraced USC water coach, is the founder of Trojan Water Polo, is a technologist, and used that club as a pipeline. According to an Daily Breeze recently, Vavich and his wife were still listed as directors of Trojan Water Polo Club, not-for-profit tax office of two thousand and sixteen. I'm sorry, you use USC and Vavich as a huge recruiting tool for your club when it suits you and then the other thing when it goes sideways. You can't have it both ways. Fact, ninety percent of our boys and El Segundo girls, Water Polo Club, for South Bay United. Question, why is Trojan now so interested in El Segundo and its residents and players whereas before they were not? Neither has any pool in El Segundo. So why do they only have two percent residency and South Bay United has approximately thirty percent and growing? The answer, because Trojan Water Polo is and always will be a feeder program for Miracosta and Loyola High School. Trojan was not interested in local kids because none of them were going to Miracosta or Loyola and we were of no viable use for them. That is why they did not recruit our kids before this. Were they before and where are they now? In closing, I implore you, please make your decision in the best interest of the people who live here and are invested here now, not the ones that suddenly love you because you have something to want.
Good evening, Mayor Boiles. My name is Colin, a lifelong resident of Redondo Beach. I've served on the South Bay Coalition Board of Directors since two thousand and eleven. I'm part owner of Hermosa Cyclery and Hermosa Beach and I'm here to bring Bike Share, Scooter Share topic. Cities between LAX and Palos Fertes, there's a natural boundary there that makes El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, a choice area for the share operators that are, and that's why it's important that these cities can lockstep. And that's what the cog is trying to do, they're trying to sort these things out and move in lockstep because when Redondo tests by, all those scooters ended up in Hermosa and everybody was upset. So moving in lockstep, contrary to the bird's request that you disregard the cog's actions, is not ideal for your neighbors because we are all in the same little South Bay area. I want to start kind of giving some context to the concept itself and them likening themselves to a, a bird and Lyft. So the name itself, Bike Share, is a misnomer. There's no sharing going, like in the share economy. When you go to Airbnb, people bring their homes and they share them. When you work with Uber or Lyft, you share your car. For scooter share and for bike share, there's no sharing of your scooter or bike to it, you don't share it. These are bike rental companies and format, that, that way of doing business is a hundred year old process and so there's nothing new there except that they have an app. Established bike shops here in the South Bay of which I'm part owner, there's Jeffers, there's Pierce Surf and a number of others have been renting bikes for as much as forty, forty-five years and this affects us quite a bit. We can't compete, companies putting their inventory on the sidewalks for free and competing with us at reduced rates, it's just not a fair playing field. And by the way, I just want to step back real quick, they liken themselves to Uber and Lyft, I didn't want to miss this point, Uber and Lyft don't put their inventory on sidewalks. They also don't do business, conduct advertising like they do on the, on the devices. They also don't do transactions and they don't drive on sidewalks. So they're anything like Uber and Lyft. It's established that these industries do harm the traditional bike rental companies, not bike rental companies like mine, but they also harm other bike companies. So there is a precedence for licensing these services so they don't affect the established businesses. In fact, you can look at New York- In fact, you can look at New York, who did a cease and desist order to stop bike share companies from coming into their area and affecting their own city bike operations. And they do, they have the ability to do it, and we encourage you, if you adopt a program, you as a minimum have some geo-fencing in there. That's standard procedure. I want to also address the cog's report, and it's also something that each of the cities that have been putting out their own. They cite a 50% interest in bike share and, and I think scooter share is about 40%. Well, I want to inform everybody here that in Seattle, the mecca for, they've embraced these bike shares since early days. They love it. Okay? Two or three people, 1,000 residences, use that each day. You have the odds of having a sixth finger or sixth toe as you do use the service. So let's not get bent out of shape here with 50% of gym membership. People may say they want to go to the gym, but they don't. And so let's not take that 50% and think that's what our citizens want. That's not what they're going to do. By the way, Lime has pulled their bikes out of Seattle and Santa Monica, and according to NACTO, that is an ongoing thing in the United States, that they alone, that they are seeing the retreat of dockless bike share services throughout the country. I spoke a year ago where dockless bike share was a panacea. It was the next thing. It was going to be everywhere. In fact, one of the council members there informed, amongst which I was one, that someday it's probably going to be business out of business, that it's just so amazing. Well, six months later, those companies are in retreat. So foresight, that panacea, the paper said the same thing. This is the next best thing to come to town, and it's virtually gone. It's like not even a threat, except if they put it into our cities, they're going to end up at the beach. Nobody's going to use them for transportation. That is a known fact. At least not very much. It's not worth it. So I would also give context to the scooter share part of it. Oh, boy. Can I have one more minute?
Seconds.
Scooters are very similar, and I want you to hold them accountable. When they say helmets, they don't mean helmets, because they're not helmets to the customers. UCLA did a report, 240 people ended up in the ERs. A third of them came ambulance, and 40% had head injuries. Sorting this out, this will sort itself out in the next six months to a year. And I would encourage you to not be on the forefront of this, on the cutting edge of the biggest step back in public safety in a generation. Let's not make our citizens guinea pigs. Let's let other cities try this, see what happens, stay for six months to a year, and let their people get harmed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carlo Wane. I am Lime's Community Affairs Manager for the Greater Los Angeles region. First and foremost, I want to thank Mayor Boils and City Council for allowing me to speak today. I am here to give public comment on Agenda M4C. At Lime, our mission is to transform transportation in convenient, affordable, and environmentally friendly modes of transportation. To comprehend just how popular scooters have become, both here and abroad. Lime was launched just in 2017. Past two years, we have provided over 35 million runs to 100-plus communities across five continents. People around the world are choosing to travel by scooter, not only because they are easy and affordable, but because they are functional. And our data confirms this. Just here in LA, we recently surveyed our rider. Forty-five riders indicated that they use scooters to replace a car. Thirty-five use this to get to and from work. Thirty-five percent use this to get dining and entertainment, and over a quarter use this to get to shopping and running errands. We want to go implement staff for their work, and we remain committed to working with the city, and we look forward to providing additional feedback as needed. At no charge, Lime can bring transportation options to El Segundo residents. We are ready and willing to serve the city of El Segundo, and hopeful that we can work with you to make that a reality. We hope that you choose to move forward with the pilot program, the CAG guidelines in consideration. We thank you for your time, allowing Lime to be a part of this public decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like that's it for public comments. City Council, so.
I have a couple of comments. Regarding our favorite topic, the pool, I went back through our action reports that gets out, Greg. And, you know, I find sometimes it's very convoluted what decision is made because there's so many conversations that are had. So going back to the action items, so the first time that we gave direction to staff was the last meeting in, oh, in February. What was that, February 22nd? Yeah? No. Action item from the February 5 meeting. So we directed staff to use the following guidelines. One, consider current and future residents. Two, prioritize for the program, greatest number of participants for peak times. Three, add off peak time. Maximize financial impact of programs. Five, diverse programs with the requirement that Alpha is allocated during peak times and South Bay gets allocated times during off-peak time. Not times. Master allocated times during off-peak times. Staff to accommodate and minimize revenues with teams. Then, when it was, so Alex mentioned that the vote was flipped. What we actually voted on was we directed staff to accommodate all programs using the criteria previously agreed upon and review in a year using the same criteria. Based upon, is my understanding that what we voted on, we voted on it, is that Alpha is given peak time. South Bay United is given prioritizing off-peak time. Is that not correct, Greg? And are we doing something different?
That was the direction given, actually backing up one step. This direction when we initially put out the RFP and those criteria. The second time you gave us direction to accommodate the one club during the peak hours and the other, the water polo club during the non-peak hour. Came back a third time, and you told us to accommodate all four.
Using criteria previously agreed upon.
That's correct.
So would that mean that Alpha would be given peak priority and South Bay United would be given off-peak priority?
That is the direction we're implementing, that direction.
Well, it seemed tonight, what Mr. Drew had to say is that that is not the case.
So the two.
I just, I don't appreciate being used to doing something that I didn't do. Right? We think if your staff doesn't understand that direction, I think we need to be clear about it.
Where we stand today is both swim clubs have been accommodated with peak times. Alpha is already using the facility, and the other swim club is going to begin using the facility during peak hours on April 1st. What we haven't done yet to implement council's direction, split up the peak times between the two water polo clubs. And that happened relatively quickly. I don't know that both clubs will be happy with that split of time.
But why is it split? Why are we not giving priority to South Bay United as directed by this council?
During off-peak hours.
That's fine, but they're still supposed to be given priority during the off-peak.
But we also have to accommodate a fourth club.
Yeah, that's if there's room available. The way we understood it, the way I'm understanding.
No, I thought we were pretty clear that all four, you said very definitively, all four programs are going to get pool time.
Just try to accommodate for so long as those previous agreed-upon criteria were agreed to. Programs using, that's why Don and I had that conversation, because he was like, just gave it away. I said, "No, because the criteria previously agreed upon was that South Bay United was given off-peak priority." That means that if there's, I hate to use this analogy, but if there's left, Trojan Water Polo gets it. We're going to do our best to try to accommodate it, but it was very clear that.
I think we should probably review the minutes there, and, you know, if you want to make a motion to bring this back further, deliberate, we could do that, but I don't think it's going to be able to continue the dialogue right now. Would you concur? What do you recommend, Greg?
Let me say, it's not agendaized tonight for discussion and action and action. So if the council does want to discuss this and give further direction, it should be put on the agenda. If there's just clarification questions that council members have, that's a different issue.
It's clear in your memorandum that you sent to us as action reports, which, and I've seen her doing these action reports, she's reviewing, she's reviewing the meeting on video and typed it up. So I just, I don't understand what's not clear. And I don't, to Drew's point, I don't feel like, again, filling this room with a bunch of people and hearing public comments on it, but I felt like we've made our decision, our direction was clear.
Let me tell you where I believe we stand. After the second, when you gave us direction to accommodate one club during peak hours, you gave us the five criteria and accommodate the water polo during non-peak hours, then I would agree, Trojan was the odd amount at that point. At your last meeting, we received direction to accommodate all four clubs using the same criteria, but what I believe staff understood was that we were going to two water polo clubs equally in the division of those off-hours.
That would not go in line with what was decided, decided previous, using the criteria previously agreed upon.
I understood it the way Greg did as well. We could go back and revisit the minutes and the video, and we could have to bring it forward yet again, but we cannot continue the dialogue tonight.
But at this juncture, I'm sure no one's.
No, the two swim clubs have been given time.
Yeah, but I feel like we keep punting this down the path, no one's at the pool. So let's, I mean, I feel at least get South Bay United in the, or the, you know.
It's not agendaized, so we can't discuss this, but I feel like we did discuss that. We made our decision, we gave our direction. I guess it wasn't digested clearly. I'm seeing it clear as day, typed up, was sent out to us.
Let's ask the clerk, Mona. I saw your reaction when he said the videos are watched. Is it not the case?
So what I'm reading here is a motion by second member, Nickle, to uphold the five criteria that was voted upon at the February 5, 2019 City Council meeting. Current and future residents' composition prioritize programs with the greatest number of participants during peak times. Diverse programs adding off-peak pricing, minimize financial impact. Accommodate four programs, Alpha Aquatics, Beach Cities Women, Trojan Water Polo Club, and South Bay United Water Polo Club. Offer one-year contracts, and after the year is complete, evaluate the programs using the same success criteria for contract extension.
If that's how you remember it differently, Scott, you can bring forth the motion to review it on the next agenda.
I guess we can, can't do that now, right, Mark?
No.
No, I mean, can't do that, can't make that motion. Do it in council comments?
Yeah, well, we can just put it on the next agenda.
What, you want to be, you want on?
I guess, how else can I say that what was voted upon was then not clear to me? The way I understood it and the way it was presented was that it was exactly what we agreed upon before, except we were adding a fourth team in the middle, but that those priorities were still going to be in place. So, I mean, is this me sitting up here saying, "Hey, I voted the wrong way because I don't understand how the motion was made," because he made that full motion? You said, "I make a motion to go off the five criteria that we voted upon at the time and add this." So I knew what I voted on the time before, so I agreed. Yes, I'm fine with what I voted upon the time before and adding that fourth team. So, I don't know.
So we, I think what we're talking is bringing back on your next, into the division of the non-peak hours between the two water polo clubs. Correct?
Yeah, let's see if it shakes out.
I'm not.
Are we going to waste time by going back and waste time? But we're going to spend time next meeting deliberating what the minutes, whether or not that was the way you intended it for to go, and then wait another meeting for the division of the water polo program? We don't have water polo in the pool at all right now. Is that correct? So let's see what staff has to present next, as it relates to water polo program assignment. Don, go ahead.
On related to public communication, first, a few speakers addressed item number four. If we do go ahead with this and take a second chance with these companies, I hope it goes in the first, because while they have a disruptive model of introducing their product and service, it's also a rogue model. And I've noticed that they did it the same way as I traveled to St. Louis, St. Memphis, et cetera. These vehicles just appear, and they do disrupt everything. And I don't, it was a very smart start, and then they'll be lucky if they get another try. But if they do, I think pay attention to Councilmember Boogarides' comments and your comments we've had here of the reckless way programs have been run, and let's try to get the best of the program so that it serves the people in town that do want to use it, people don't, if we go ahead and try. As far as related to the allocation of pool time and space, I think the two presentations from South Bay United leaders were right on. Consistently here, I have said the same thing for months, that we need to prioritize the pool use for people from El Segundo. And if there's anything left over, then we can sell it to out-of-town teams. We got mixed up and lost along the way somehow, and I've never seen an El Segundo City Council fined for teams based in other cities at the expense of their own teams. I've never seen, I never, I'd lived long enough to see it, but it's happened here a couple of times. And people in town are mad about it, that care about the topic. I'm embarrassed to be a part of a council that made a decision. I can imagine what we'd do in Redondo Beach if we busted in there and told everybody how great our teams are and we need to use the pool, we want to use it, and not give their local priority. That just doesn't happen in the real world. It happened here in the last couple of months. Maybe we erred, maybe we confused, but I haven't been confused from the beginning on what should happen to this pool, and I'm not changing anything now forward. The pool is meant for the people of El Segundo, and if there's anything else left over, fine, make money off of it, but don't screw up the people of El Segundo and our teams, the people outside the city. Thank you.
Just want to add, so I want to remind everybody that Alpha Aquatics, which my kids participated in many years back, there's no conflict, they're already inquired, El Segundo residents when they came to town. Then they grew to eighty-five residents plus within two years. That's all I have to say, say, on the public occasion. Thank you. Anything else from City Council? Thank you very much. All right, let's move, let's move to procedural questions. Actually, you know what? No, we're going to do the special meeting right now? Is that right, Barbara?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So the special meeting that we packet relates to the LA Street Festival. We're going to cover that because we've got some speakers here that do get going, so let's go through that now. Barbara Voss and.
I can introduce. Yeah.
Okay, great.
So, good evening, Mayor Boils and members of council. We're here this evening, we have some special guests from the Los Angeles Times to discuss the proposed Los Angeles Street Festival to be held here in the fall, September 20th and 21st. Just to give you a bit of background before I turn it over to our speakers, the city was originally approached back in the fall of last year about a first-time-ever annual event, the World Urban, and that was an event that was just in the very early idea, planning stages. That event has since evolved, that we're presenting this evening, which is the Los Angeles Street Festival, than being several different sporting events. This, and they'll explain this in the presentation, this is an event that focuses on three key pillars. It's expected to bring 5,000 visitors to El Segundo over each of the two days, so 10,000 total. We are for, and it's a free community event, I should mention, we need to work with the Los Angeles Times to develop a partnership for the event. We're not, the organizers, media and the Los Angeles Times are not looking for donation of any, we're looking for a true partnership in which we leverage the significant media power. donation of any, we're looking for a true partnership in which we leverage the significant media power of the Los Angeles Times to promote El Segundo as a destination, to attract businesses to El Segundo. And we could really help support our efforts in that. Change, the city's being asked for support area of permit fee reduction or waivers. Getting in community support, outreach to the community. Emergency services, police and fire support for the event. And the partnership would not exceed of fifty thousand dollars. And we're not looking for anything this evening in terms of what that partnership entails. What we are looking for is authorization for us to begin those initiations and agreement for a partnership that meets the needs of both, both parties. So with that, I'd like to interest the COO of the Los Angeles Times, Chris Arriary. And the vice president of partnerships, Myra Marayag. And, thank you, I didn't think I got it. And director of events, Scott Dolivo.
Thanks for having us tonight. I'd start by saying we're new to the El Segundo community, business community. And thank you to all of you and, and the community itself for, we have a new owner at the Los Angeles Times and Dr. Patrick Soon-Shon. He bought the LA Times in a bit of a from a timetable standpoint. And we had a that was expiring downtown in a matter of months, a matter of days after he actually closed on the business. And to move, had known, the LA Times hadn't owned the building downtown in a number of years. It was home of state developers. We were a tent. Obviously, a number of people have built, had built their lives around, we were very long meniers, particularly in the newsroom. So a number of people who built their lives around working downtown. But in terms of the timetable, it seemed impossible at the time. All that went into it, a lot of community support, we have a very happy work. We love El Segundo. I myself personally moved to, maybe ten years ago, to work in El Segundo. So it's, it's full circle for me. The LA Times, we have, we have a challenge. We are a local news business. This is a difficult, Southern California, difficult place over locally in eighty-plus cities that make up here Los Angeles. We obviously could do a better job. We do understand, and particularly the events business is important to get our out to meet people in these communities. Do things event-wise, just in the same place. But we do need a home base. We have, we have now here. Our owner is not a real estate investor. He owns real estate significantly in, going elsewhere, but not for the purposes of flipping real estate earn a profit. He owns it strictly to develop businesses in. I think he's shown that. There's seven hundred new that LA Times now, Scott, the resident of El Segundo. We have a few new residents. I expect we'll have several more. Actually, and some of those people who, the commutes are quite challenging. We have expanded the newsroom alone more than twenty-five percent since Patrick bought the paper. In endeavor to cover what makes up this better, including communities like this. So we're here to talk about, talk about a specific event. This would be the first of what I believe to be made. So we've had a good initial experience and we can do more. Turn it over to Myra.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Drew Boyle and the members of city council. Thank you for letting us take the time to present to you this inaugural event coming into our city in El Segundo in September, as Barbara mentioned. Purpose of this presentation is to give you an overview of the event. Also discuss the estimated economic impact that our event could potentially bring to the city of El Segundo, as well as outline the requests that we are asking for in partnership for the So as Barbara mentioned, our event is focused on three core pillars. Think of LA Street Festival as a celebration of the next generation of games. The three on three basketball, esports, as well as street festival. We have the dates confirmed for September twenty-first and twenty-second, which is a Saturday and Sunday. And the executive team behind the vision, before I get started into the entire event, event is a huge house. So as you may know, Dr. Patrick Soon-Shon, photo of this photo, our brand-new owner of LA Times. Rick is a gentleman who you may know from his times during the LA Lakers, but he actually huge proponent in the esports movement. Not only does he own Echo Fox, he also is a huge proponent in the esports space and trying to get the esports movement into the Olympic circle. And Jen, the woman in the left, is she, she's actually a high-ranking, she's previous high-ranking official as part of the IOC. So she actually years of experience in terms of international sports management. So it's her on our team and she's been working very closely with us as well. So what's happening in September? We are actually going to be hosting the FIBA three-on-three World Tour Masters. It's coming to the first time and we are excited to house this here in El Segundo. If you're familiar with FIBA three-on-three basketball, it's such a completely different format. Here is probably very familiar with the NBA format, but this is absolutely different. Ten-minute sprint, it's a half-court, player, play minutes or the twenty-one. Very much high energy and such, such different speed. And so as Barbara mentioned, this is going to be a free community event. So it's going to be great for the spectators to come and see our And the great thing about this is that FIBA three-on-three basketball was announced in twenty seventeen will be part of the Tokyo Twenty-Olympic Games. So spectators will be able to come and see for FIBA three-on-three and they will potentially be competing in the Tokyo Olympic Games next year. So this is a great community event. Oh, that's why. In addition to the professional FIBA three-on-three World Tour Masters, we will have a huge community event with a village court. So this is where we will have a kid zone where there will be miniature basketball courts. There'll be clinics for adults to interact. Graffiti walls where brands can coexist and create wooden or cardboard graffiti branded. As Barbara mentioned, we're estimating at minimum five thousand entities per day. This will be a pre-ready community of ticketed VIP areas. The pillar of our event is esports. And so Dr. Patrick, as you may know, is also building the LA Times Center in El Segundo. But the cornerstone of our esports event will be an open esports tournament where everybody can come and compete. And within the main stage, we will, the entry fee of the entrance to contribute to the prize pool. Great, because anyone can compete and compete against amateurs and esports professionals. So this will really engage the community, if anyone to want to come and participate. On the other side of our esports lane will be an esports cult fest. So think this with mobile gaming stations, you know, indie developers showing latest video games, folks in cosplay character booth, things that will really help the community engage with the gaming environment. So there will be cosplayers, gaming characters, battle lounge, et cetera, bringing up the entire esports culture area. And then the third pillar is our festival. So we're helping LA Times curate the food, the music, the arts, all of in the festival arena. This will embody the energy of LA Street Festival focusing on music, arts, food, and cultural activities. And so obviously with all of the different businesses, local we have been talking to the city in terms of potential sponsorship integration ideas, both on-ground as well as ownership and sponsorship events. So this is a slide to show the different ways that we can work with different events and different companies here locally in El Segundo. So our proposed site map, as you can see from this, this slide is predominantly focused within our LA Times campus. For those of you familiar, we are on the intersection of Imperial and Douglas. And so a large part of our footprint, LA Street Festival will be within our campus with partial street closure on Douglas, up Hill, A and to Imperial. So this is our proposed site map. In terms of economic impact, Jenny Mann, who has worked with the IOC, has been pivotal in terms of researching different of international events. So we really took at the national spending and expenditures that these visitors will come in, will into the local El Segundo area. Not only did we look at pre-economic impacts, we've looked at comparable events like the U.S. Open and hunting each, the X Games in Austin. And so based on that, the estimate for the city of El Segundo is that this event will at minimum provide an economic impact of two million dollars. This is based on the minimum estimate of five thousand dollars per day using the two-hundred-dollar-per-day expenditure estimate that we've received from companies like Beacon as well as additional hotel revenue of the out-of-town people will be coming for the event, both within the International FIBA Association, the athletes, the delegates, et cetera. So I think the reason why Dr. Patrick has moved our, our, our office of LA Times into El Segundo words specifically from Mayor Drew Boyle is how great the city has, has come about in the last a hundred years with innovation, innovation, ship and growth. El Segundo was recognized as aerospace capital of the world and it has hundreds of Fortune 500 companies home to all of these massive sports events. And so the ask is largely our venue is going to be our LA Times land, but we are requesting for partial road closure of during the dates pre-leading up to our event, stay at for takedown of our event. We've also for waiving of the special event permit fees since our event will amplify sound, vendors, alcohol, et cetera. As well as all support from the city of El Segundo. So that would operations, emergency services such as police, fire and ambulance, traffic control, helping us market and get the community to really engage inaugural event, as well as get local business support and approvals. So in exchange for this partnership, we've put together a special package that really breaks up into an onsite activation where the city of El Segundo can have its own footprint at our event. So you'll have a two-hundred-square square from site at our event, as well as taking into consideration marketing inclusion. We have a one-point-five-million-dollar promo campaign across digital, print, TV, app, et cetera, all the platforms. And so the city of El Segundo branding will be a part of this massive promotional event. An addition to that will also have advertising media included El Segundo use as see fit. In our conversations with Barbara and Greg, we know that there is a big business attraction initiative for the city of El Segundo. So you can have a half-page of the LA Times business. Also have a custom travel pass email that's distributed to eighty-eight thousand subscribers and have you as part of our event program and our thank you follow-up email. And so with that, we thank you so much for your time. We look continuing the conversation with the city of El Segundo to make this inaugural event a success.
Thank you very much. Any questions for LA Times while, while
I do have one question. Where is your base located for this event? Yes.
We're talking right now to various hotel years. We're having various conversations with the AC Hotel, which will be open in the spring, as well as Hilton Hotel right on our post set, as well as the Hyatt House, I believe on Douglas. So we're continuing those conversations. Barbara was gracious and has have us in the hospitality meeting last month to speak directly with all of the years to, to create customized packages for them.
Thank you, Dr. Bren.
Yeah, and the up to fifty-thousand-dollar cost that the city is expected to bear emergency services and staff work?
Yes, we were, when we, when we were speaking with Barbara and Greg, the costs of the special permit fee as well for fire and ambulance.
Thank you.
Those are fully burdened rates?
They would be, yes. Done some estimates and looked at preliminary numbers for the permit fee, preliminary numbers for police and fire, but they would be fully burdened.
Happened at the World Games, I'm a little confused. First, we were getting them and then I read in the paper they're going to the past and now this is here. So what, what happened to that?
Yeah. The GASE is the international organization. There were some, really just differences of a pin the focus, some of the lesser, shouldn't say lesser, different sports, the broad number of sports. So from a time standpoint, we got involved quite late, really in that process, in the bid process. So they had spent, in fairness to them, they had spent a lot with past and they were ultimately more comfortable with them, particularly as it relates to the on primarily versus the long some of the other sports. So that's largely.
And is there any connection between what you're dealing in the, the Olympics? The LA in twenty-eight?
Not a connection, a sense of working with, directly with the organizing committee of twenty-twenty-eight. However, the sports, three-on-three basketball, the event that happens here in September, those players are earning points go into ultimately into the qualifying for the Olympics.
Is that an Olympic sport in twenty-eight?
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
So I just wanted clarification. So this event is really LA Times putting on on or who's the, who's
Yeah.
bankrolling, are you, the LA Times is, this is their event?
Los Angeles Times, yes. Nant Media is the parent, apparently now, Los Angeles Times. And just contextually, the you produce the largest literary festival in the country that is a hundred and fifty thousand people on the campus of USC over a couple of days. Now produce the largest, depending on measure we believe certainly the most interesting food festival in the country and food bowl that's in a year that is two-hundred-and-fifty events all throughout. So then with a couple of key anchor events, we produce ninety so we have not done a lot in sports. We have done some sports things historically, but Scott Dolivo, El Segundo resident, and is the events team. So this isn't far afield for the LA Times. We do quite regularly, we have an event almost every week of the year.
Final question. Have you decided how many VIP ticket packages you'll sell? Because it's, it's entry for the population, but you have a VIP package. How many of them are going to be, do you know yet?
So I think, I think now we're figuring in the site map where our VIP areas will be located because we'll have several areas within the, in the three-on-three esports and the festival area. I think each, each pop probably hold about two-hundred folks in each area as an initial estimate.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just, for your, this is going to be your first hoping on this. What is your net revenue expected from the, what are you hoping to come out at the end of the day?
Well, given that it's a first-year event, we are, you know, either happy to earn our investment back, frankly. It's a longer term, particularly with the event center being constructed main building in El Segundo. Difficult in year one for event to from profitability standpoint.
So I know where residents are going to ask, why is it the Los Angeles Street Festival, El Segundo Street Festival? Instead of saying like the Los Times Street Festival?
Not, not a particular reason for that, really, to tell you the truth, other than Not, not a particular reason for that, really, to tell you the truth, other than we will use, the Times will be a significant mechanism in the promotion of it. So I don't feel always need to plaster our name all over it.
But it's our name either.
I thought you would ask, why isn't it the El Segundo? Los Angeles is the term, as I said, 80-plus cities here were really trying to cover and in some ways represent. Common currency, whether we like it or not, is Los Angeles. Nothing more than that.
Two Carols from a branding and tagline standpoint, will be LA's festival and broad, what's the word I'm looking for, both place like held in El Segundo or hosted in El Segundo? Okay. Sort of clear.
Yeah.
Great.
And we have to get people to, so the marketing won't be exclusively Los Angeles Times media mediator will do television and benefit from, we have people where to come. So we will certainly include El Segundo prominently.
Great. Any other questions for Chris?
No, I don't have questions.
Okay. All right. So we are, what we're in here is authorizing staff to negotiate a sponsorship package, $50,000 in exchange for $50,000 value in exchange for our expenses and offset. Is that correct?
Not to exceed $50,000. And one thing, one thing I mentioned is that all of this is subject to an approved special event permit. They've submitted a preliminary special event permit, but we're still waiting for a lot of other information that will come with that. So we'll aid the parameters of the event and any kind of sponsorship or partnership with on that.
Okay.
So LA Times is new to El Segundo, and we're happy that you're a great part. But I also have to, we have to remember the residents, and I was brought to my attention that the run for education, money for our schools, were just given a bill of 15,000 or an estimate of 15,000 to run their run. So it's really hard for me to sit and give a fee completely for a company that's going to break even when I, we're charging $15,000 to a nonprofit who's trying to raise money for schools. So I just, I'm really sure we're thinking about that. And it's, I know it's about advertising, I get the whole advertising component, I get, I get it, but that's really hard for me to, how do we justify that with residents?
I'd like to clarify, but I'd be, we'd be happy to break even. I think, I think you can, we're private, we don't talk a lot about our finances. This is, if we were all in this commercial, including the, our owner, team, and much of the staff, we would be working, sorry. There is a public trust involved. I'm not comparing us to a charity, but we don't do a lot of things purely for commercial reasons.
And I understand.
My understanding is the run for education, we share the cost, right?
And they were given a bill of $15,000 for the.
And our cities cost $30,000?
I don't know, I'm just telling you.
Be a 50% discount or a significant discount on the total cost.
That's, last year they paid seven, and this year they're asked to pay 15.
To go that point, we've weighed a number of special events in the year, whether it was for the cross-country team or at the lakes, and I don't think for any of those, unless my lesson is wrong, that we totally waived all of the fully burdened rates for our support. The only one that I think received a break of that substantial caliber was, is the art where we contributed to the advertising, to the tune of $1,000 per event. So $248,000 is not out of line with what we're seeing here, but a full break is something that we have not done previously for other events, unless I am, and I will throw myself to the mercy of the court, I could be, I could be misremembered. Thirty-two thousand is, is the, is the art total?
So we're really looking at this as a partnership. We know that advertising is expensive. We think that the magnitude of this event, we will be able to maximize our visibility on a national level and certainly countywide, and Myra and Chris could probably speak about advertising. But we are looking for a partnership pool, so.
Do we think this will be televised?
We would get, we're competing in kind.
Plan, plan is televised.
I think that is an important distinction, perhaps, as we, that, that these other pieces, there's not an advertising commercial value to the, based on it. So there is a means of exchange being, being contributed here. Live from El Segundo does have a currency to it. That is, though, a big ask of residents, particularly when they see us charging the cross-country team to run on the go. There is a, a, a big distinction here that we need to be there, that we're making that we are receiving something in exchange for any sort of amelioration we provide on this.
And as an example, one of the items that we're talking about in this is a half-page ad in the LA Times business, isn't an street festival ad, this is an El Segundo business attraction ad, full color ad with online would be $15,000. So we will in exchange for this partnership.
Can they make a full-page ad?
Just thinking, two issues.
Well, we might ask for a, you know, travel section ad as well.
That can be part of the negotiation, but I would say that a El Segundo-based institution, when we came here, which we think much, ran a couple advertisements welcoming us to the community, which, again, we think one, one of those ads is close to the value that we're looking here, what it runs, full run across the city. Again, high economic comments, we're a private company, I don't talk a lot, a lot, it's, we're rolling in it, given the business we're in. So I'm sure we can, as, if we authorize the negotiation, we can negotiate half-page to full-page.
Full-page mean?
Time too.
In all seriousness, though, given your experience working for the LEDC, city said they had the opportunity to bring many, Dr. Sun Chung has bought now or leased.
Twelve.
Enterprises, battery technology, cancer treatment, what's the scooter project he's got going on, biopolymers, like things he's working on, what, what would a city typically offer like that to town as an incentive?
Well, it really depends on.
A lot, right?
But it, it significant value in terms of the number of jobs created, the job, the industry, all of those things, obviously, revenue generated.
And we don't have, and also it helps also going on the map, I reflect back on the COG General Assembly a couple weeks back, and just hearing him speak about how he literally changed in the world through all these new technologies, and he's doing a lot of that based on El Segundo. But you should talk to him because he was courting other cities, was making this presentation. We still have plenty of inventory here.
Put that in the partner, no, I'm just kidding.
All right, any other comments, questions?
I still, still struggling with, with completely waiving. I still think that there's needs to be, it's going to be hard for us to sell this to the rest of, with, there needs to be a component.
Is there a possibility that when the negotiation goes, if we have a monetized and thoughtful, thoughtfully presented that, that we can share and, and, I don't know that the measure that we have to approve the negotiated settlement, but something, this is an exchange of a product in lieu of fees.
Right.
And not an amelioration of fees, which is an important distinction. We are receiving something tangible in return.
Right. Well, and it's funny because that you, because the, the agenda item that we got here has been updated to what, then it's not what was up here, because I actually wrote here that this, what was listed here did not justify a city. So I see that you made, there was some edits from this, what was needed to what was up there.
Oh, in the, in terms of the benefit?
Yeah, because disappointed when I read this, to be honest with you, because I do events, and felt this was a cookie cutter partnership for the city of El Segundo. I was kind of disappointed, I'm not going to be lying, LA Times to, I was very like, just basically took what they give to everybody else and put it on the paper. Notice that that component, some of it was edited, so that just, I just felt you're out for a lot of money, and you really didn't put a lot of thought to the partnership here. That's quite disappointing.
I think in fairness, Carol, just being a little bit more involved, is that they, they had to have considerable shift when they went away from the World Urban Games, so this thing is constantly evolving.
I know, it's, I mean, there are a lot of people in the department that could have said, hey, what's best?
We look at the conversation.
Yeah.
Even if they're number, Chris, can you, if you're going to, yeah, you need to address the mic, thank you.
I mean, there is value in having the event here in and of itself. We do have a track record of these events growing. We want to do more here. We always talk of additional negotiation around what the marketing components are. Agree that we haven't put thought into it. It is averaging, it will be changing to some degree in the edges. We're talking about things that you're unhappy with, though, for sure.
Got to think about, too, there could be an article tomorrow in the Los Angeles Times, or maybe in a couple days, about how the El Segundo chose to partner with the LA Times' first-ever Los Angeles Street Festival.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
And that in and of itself is worth more than a full-page ad, a half, anything. I, I'm with you, I think that.
I just, we just.
To your point, it's, it's important, it's very well taken. I think that it's worth, in my opinion, it's worth partnering with them to see what happens, and if it's a success, next, it's a different station.
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I, I'm happy that you're doing this, I just, we just need to make that it, the information's done in a manner that it can show that it is a benefit to the residents.
Sure.
And that it's not, we're waiving fees because you're asking us to waive fees. Because we have other, I mean, we're going to hear from our constituents that, like the run for, you know, that they're being asked to pay fees when a company like the Times is not. So we just have to be cognizant of that, and do represent the residents as well as our business, but we have a constituents that we have.
Totally understood. And I don't take any criticism over the marketing plan. We, I may not agree, but I think there's things that we more along those lines, where we talk about.
Well, the run for education takes place on a Saturday, so the following Sunday, when above the fold, it announces, I say this time, in El Segundo. I'm sure we can point to that.
Yes, and we can give you their contact if you would like to be a, EPTA run for education.
Even if they're off by 50% of their, you feel pretty conservative on that number in terms of economic, it's in that deck?
Yeah, I mean, it's tough to do, but based on other events, and some of us are quite familiar with and.
I mean, even if they're off by 75%, that's a return investment. Whereas Run, which I participate in and sponsor, we are not getting that economic benefit.
No, I, I.
And we're not getting the draw in Segundo, you know, that we're going to get from this event from outside.
We think our direct revenue is 20 to 30,000.
How much?
30,000.
Yeah, but 2 million economic impact is what I heard.
At a region, our direct tax on the TOT and some sales tax, probably in the 20 to 30,000.
Oh, yeah.
Cooping 20 to 30,000 of the 50.
That's attractive, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, the regional economic impact can be taxes to the city. It's a much broader conversation.
Given most of the direct revenue would be here in town.
Yeah, but we tax.
TOT, oh, the TOT is not going to be that many hotel room nights, right? How many room nights?
Yeah, there should be a lot of room nights.
Well, that's what, to find out where the base hotel was, because if it was on the central, central core, I'm not really supporting this. But she answered the question correctly.
We, we've heard that loud and clear in initial conversations, but very focused on El Segundo hotels.
Swimming? Asking for.
Next, next time.
All right, is one of my colleagues like?
And what is the exact motion?
Essentially, staff has recommended that we authorize them to enter into negotiations with the LA Times, and up to $50,000 of sponsorship offset with expenses.
Correct.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Five-oh, great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We need to, talk to Sherry.
Item one. Oh, no, actually, consider of a motion to reordnances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye, sorry.
Okay, it's okay, five-oh. Item one, consideration and possible action to receive and file presentation by Ignited LLC of the finalized recruitment marketing campaign for the department, and I believe Captain Bermudez is going to. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jaime Bermudez, and I'm a police captain with the police department. In October of last year, we received Arthur's contract ignited to develop a marketing campaign for our police recruitment efforts. I've worked with Bree, the project manager of this project, she's a resident, and her team to develop our marketing plan and prepare for kickoff on April 1st. We've gone back and forth several ideas, and I think you will be impressed with the final product. I'd introduce Bree Bandi, she's the VP of Brand for Ignited, and Chalita Daznanjali, VP of Media.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, thanks for having us. Chalita and I, as the captain mentioned, we both live and work in Segundo, say that we're ride or die El Segundo. I've seen you at Center, Center Street many times morning, so we're very happy and honored to hear. So a few months ago, we sat in the chief's office, and we learned that by 2024, half of the PD is going to be eligible for, that they needed to complement their current recruiting with some paid dollars and do something quick and fast and impactful. So today, very quickly, we will with you our strategy and our creative, and then. So we started by doing a deep into the competitive landscape. We do this so that we understand should, shouldn't do from a creative perspective. We found that a lot of the different PDs are, their message is very texty. They oftentimes showcase officers standing in uniform, they use a lot of color, blocks of color, other colors. We walked away from this, and we said, this is what we're not going to do, make sure that our creative stands out. Then we had the pleasure of interviewing nine officers and two city employees. We are specifically going after local officers, so we wanted to talk to them about what motivates them, like what messaging should we use in our creative that's going to resonate with them and grab their attention. As you, as you imagine, they said, we're highly motivated by compensation, and in all research, we have not found another city or PD that has a $25,000 signing bonus. It's highly, and that it is in the forefront of all of our messaging. We learned that the El Segundo Police Department, which we renamed ESPD, is like, treat one another with respect, unlike cities, and that El Segundo, unlike other cities, a big city with a small town feel. And this is actually sort of inspired us to come up with a strategic option that all of our creative sort of laddered up to, and that's the idea of uniquely El Segundo, uniquely ESPD. This city, unlike any other city, and our officers who's here, they protect and serve a city that is committed to innovation and space and government. It's amazing. Side note, when I moved in eight years ago, my neighbors brought high and. Side note, when I moved in eight years ago, my neighbors broke the high, which has literally never happened in all my years. Um, it is an amazing, an amazing city, and the Police Department is unique because they treat one another with respect. They have amazing benefits. They have your support. They have the support of the community. They have job, job opportunities. So we took all of this and built a creative camp, campaign with the idea of doing, so we have one of our officers and a city resident take a ride in a car and talk about what the city means to each of them. Um, and so the officer would have an opportunity to talk about amazing benefits, and the citizen would be able to talk about why they appreciate all that our officers do. Um, meanwhile, we showcase the town and the Lakers facility and the beach and all of the wonderful things that we have, they protect. And then we said, why don't we knock that up a little bit, and why don't we try to get an athlete? So with Barbara's help, are you still here? Thank you for all of your, we were able to get Luke Robitaille, who is extremely charming, and we put together this video.
Thanks for coming today. Welcome aboard. I'm glad to be here. This is pretty special. So what a, what a perk if I become a cop. The years that you spend in another agency counts with this department. You've got tuition reimbursement, twenty-five thousand dollars signing, signing us, a good retirement system, lifetime medical. And you get to live in El Segundo. Big city, but a small-town feel. Can you start, all right, now, can we do that? Uh, we did it. Good job. Look at this. Okay, I get that. I get a little with that. For somebody that needs training, you're doing a job of recruiting me. I hate to make it up, but before you go, we do need to talk about the parking ticket. I don't know. I got a meeting, so I just gotta go. We got some big- The tickets that we need to talk about, Luke. Okay, thanks.
Um, so we have another, a few other important elements to this campaign. Uh, we are doing, first and foremost, a landing page. So I understand that the city is updating their website, which is fabulous. In the meantime, we wanted to make sure there was a place that had all of the information very streamlined and organized manner so that people aren't jumping off and confused. So, um, if you go to www.jointespd, you can see a beautiful landing page. We have ads and online banners. Uh, we have a home building. And you'll notice that we, we have treatment. We have the letters ESPD, and we showcase the various aspects of our community that include the Police Department, also the North Tower and whatnot. So now, Chalita will tell you where this is going and who is gonna- Thank you, thank you. Yeah, oops, wrong direction. Correction. Uh, okay, so first, where, how, when is this all gonna run? So we're focusing in April, November time period, and we're really doing peak spring and fall, since those are recruiting time periods. A lot of people travel in the summer during the holidays. They don't change jobs. So we're really focusing on the, on historically looking roles. Um, and then we very highly want to target, as you mentioned, current police officers so we can bring them to, to our city. Um, and then we are targeting the Southern California, um, Southern Angeles, California area with a lot of other PDs, other more inland empire-type, um, geographies as well to really bring them and, and showcase that great, we just showed where we have the beach and we have this great community that can- So getting a little bit more to, um, where, or how we were able to decipher where to, where to run these ads to reach these officers. You know, they are less than one percent of the general population, so you can imagine they have unique habits. Um, they, for example, over index really had a newspaper for out-of-home. Um, looking employment on, on the internet still, and their mobile devices are still important to them. So actually, now you're thinking, hey, that's actually like, so you can, you can reach a lot of people through these different channels. So the next layer that we have to look at is how to actually target them specifically through these channels that we just, um, went through. Probably, we're using location-based technology, so one way, we have an app on board that's very close to, um, the In-Ment Retention Center that's in LA to go after the, um, police officers. Um, and then we're also using mobile data that work in these other PDs, as well as in there, knowing that they come in every day in and out, so that they work in these departments and PDs. We're also using data to find, that already lists, lists as a current officer, ones that are looking for jobs, actually on job search websites, um, as well as go on other law enforcement sites of interest. All of these little data points mirror together to tell us that this is a current officer. So we target them digitally through this data. Um, and then we also have, um, a device app-based targeting as well, which is based on, on, that are on officer's device. They have very unique apps that they use in law enforcement, and we can use that information to tell us that this person with this, that this is an officer. So all that being said, our annual plan ladders up to one out-of-home board as in downtown, as well as mobile and desktop banners. Again, highly targeting the data I just talked about, using the geolocation information I just talked about to reach a specific officer. Will also be in law enforcement civic print publications, so PORAC, SFI, there to really reach, again, current officers. Then also people who are searching for jobs online for Angeles Police Department jobs, um, other geo areas, you know, and on the internet as well. Through so, where people are, you know, constantly using their mobile devices that way. So now you're asking, how are we gonna measure success? Um, very important. So our primary key capabilities are really increasing traffic to that landing page that Bree just mentioned, um, as well as people who are actually coming to apply now. So that's like true interest in submitting an application. And then we'll also look at the actual application submissions that we're able to, um, you know, we'll be looking at this across all the different media types that we, that we have. And if some are working better than others, then we'll also be optimizing towards the specific events and properties that are really driving all of these successes. Um, and that's what we'll be able to do between the spring and the fall, um, periods as well. So this all launches April first. We'll be able to come back and give results with you. And thank you so much for your time. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I lo-, I love the creative copy. I think it's a brilliant video with Luke's. Um, on the, are you measuring conversion then when they click to apply or actually submit an application? And then, do you have a pixel, like, do you have a way to get that all the way through? Just curious.
Well, we do and we don't. We, um, we're in charge of, or we can track our creative to our landing page, what they do there and how they click. And we actually have to work with, um, ESPD for the government job site. We don't have access. We've asked. But we're gonna meet with them and show them what it is that we need so that we can collect the data.
Okay, great.
We're also adding, um, to where people say, we care about this job application. We're trying to change that up so they can actually say, advertise, out-of-home advertising, try to get more information on how they came to us.
Cool. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you catch that, Mona? After she caught that.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, good stuff, stuff. Number two, consideration and possible action to receive and file a presentation by the Police Department on the implementation of a traffic plan and street closures, eleven hundred, it's a block of East Acacia and surrounding neighborhood during the eighteen annual Lights Event, commonly known as Candy Cane Lane, fiscal impact five thousand two ninety-one, Councilman Nickel.
I'm pretty sure I'm outside for this.
I think that's probably right. Mark stepped away, but yeah, okay, thank you. He lives on, right there, eleven hundred. Okay, and, yeah, thank you. So, Captain Mendoza.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mayor, our council members. Unfortunately, we don't have a beautiful video, so they're just gonna see us up here, uh, speaking. Uh, so we're here to talk Candy Cane Lane, the twenty eighteen, uh, two thousand eighteen Candy Cane Lane. Uh, as you all know, Candy Cane Lane started in nineteen forty, and it's been a special event for this community for many years. With the evolution of social media and with word of mouth, this event has grown, honestly, every, uh, it's grown so big now that Google Maps actually has a designation on the twelve-hundred block that says Candy Cane Lane. So this keeps coming and coming every single year. Uh, and this event has created problems for the Police Department, for the community. Uh, these, these are in the form of traffic, parking, trash, uh, people in the streets, uh, people needing to use a restroom. So, uh, because of these issues, in twenty seventeen, uh, staff conducted a study what to do for the twenty eighteen Candy Cane Lane event. And this study did, uh, listening to community members coming to the council, talking about their recommendations and their issues, along with, um, we hosted a community event where community members were brought in, and they gave recommendations and input on what they wanted to see for the result of that, uh, council told staff to implement a full closure for the twenty eighteen event of the eleven hundred to the twen-, to the twelve-hundred block, East Acacia Avenue. This included hard closures at the Center Acacia intersection and for the Walnut and California intersection. So here with me tonight is Sergeant Tony Delaramo. Jay will talk about the specifics of the closures for seventeen nights. Uh, he directly over management of the personnel that was there every single day, and he'll talk specifically about what happened, and I'll, and I'll be able to answer questions.
Again, I was assigned the task of providing safety for this event. Our primary goal was to provide safety for the residents and the visitors that attended the event. In order to do this, we set barricades on both the Center Acacia side and the Walnut and California side. What we did was, uh, we eliminated, went into the restricted area, put up barricades, six and ten. Our goal was to try to minimize the contact and the intermingling of vehicles with, uh, personnel with, with. We wanted to make sure that we had a good time, but to make it as safe as possible. So what we did is we put two cadets on each barricade, on both sides. Their instructions were contact, that came in the barricade, they wanted to enter, and the goal was to allow residents to come in as long as they were inside the vehicle and the car was registered to that restricted area. We also talked to, talked to them a little bit, evaluated them a little bit. The reason why we want them to come into the restricted area, including anybody that's been injured or anything else that is suspicious. And if that happened, we called, we said, we're out to come contact them and make sure everything was okay. So those seventeen days, it required four cadets and a PTO every night, uh, as well as myself on many of the nights to make sure everything was going well. In that time, it required about four hundred and forty-six hours of personnel to, uh, to accomplish this mission, and we did everything we could to, um, do schedule adjusts. Some of it was overtime. The cost to do it, the full in burden rate was approximately forty-one thousand, the actual cash rate for the city came out, it's about a little over fourteen thousand dollars. We estimated every night about fifteen hours travel within restricted area, either entered that area. Overall, it was a low-key event. Some of it was, uh, due to the fact that we had a lot of personnel out every night, every night. We also had our patrol officers around the area, trying to help out, visual deterrence, contact people, make sure everything was going well. Unfortunately, nowhere's worked. We did have some complaints. Uh, it was sixteen calls for service that was particularly related to the Candy Cane Lane and directly around the area. Most of the calls were small things like lost property. We had a, a lost, able to find the parents. We had one family disturbance, an argument outside the restricted area. That turned out to not be a crime. We were able to sit and address the issue and send them on their way. One act, minor accident just outside Candy Cane. During that time, we had twenty-two parking situations issued. And it was directly around, there were many more that we issued, uh, within a few months of there. Most of the, um, the complaints that I heard outside, calls for service, traffic and trash-related, um, there were a lot of complaints about people dumping trash outside their vehicles and baby issues, diapers, those kind of things. Um, but there wasn't too many complaints that I got. Our, our biggest concerns was traffic issues, particularly having the cars in with, inside the restricted area. So one of the things that we had, we had, is any car that came, we signed a cadet to escort that car to its destination. We were able to clear the street to make it as safe as possible. Uh, the successes of this, uh, I, I had, I had the chance to, uh, as a sergeant in years past, and it was pretty chaotic as cars, cars drive between the people and shutting down the intersections on both sides really helped a lot. It really helped to mitigate those issues, and I really, not eliminate, but minimize it. And, uh, all the air was pretty calm, so it was fairly successful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your efforts. Thank you. Okay, item three, consideration, Councilman Nickel, wherever you're at, come on. Consideration and possible action to receive and file a report on accessory dwelling, ADU plans and permits since adoption of the ADU ordinance in July twenty seventeen. This is an eighteenth month review. Sam Lee is gonna present on this, Director of Safety.
Thank you, Mayor Boils, uh, council members. This is very brief, but, um, the ADU ordinance was originally approved in July of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, this is the eighteenth month of, in the first twelve months, there were thirty-six applications, and in the last six months, there've been seven. So it seems to be slowing down, slowing down. Um, the size of the ADUs range from, um, a little above two hundred square feet to just below the maximum of twelve hundred square feet. And, uh, average size is a little over six hundred and square feet. That's it.
Do you have any questions for Sam?
So, so Sam, do you think the reason for the influx with and to slow down and it's gonna normalize, or?
Well, I think there were, there were several people who were, um, had some work ops, rec rooms. Um, they had these types of use. So when they saw the opportunity to legalize, um, they took advantage of it. And, um, as, um, time goes, I think, um, you see less and less of that, so. We are, we are thinking of bringing an item back this summer to, um, to refine, revise some of the, um, ADU ordinance that kicked into effect like two years before. Um, there's some that the state wants us to correct from HCD that we're catering with the City Attorney's Office, and we'll be bringing it back this-
Our count of freestanding new construction is somewhere between ten and fifteen.
Well, there's, um, there's forty-three, um, you know, some of the data informations, I'm not clearly sure, but in my estimation, I think about three-quarters of those are, um, not attached to the main house. They're detached from, um, from the main house. So either they're standalone or attached to a garage or a rec room or something like that.
Thank you very much, Sam. Appreciate it. I'll read item four, and then we'll discuss about this one and explain why. Now, item four, consideration and possible action to, one, receive a regarding efforts to introduce shared mobility, bicycles, scooters, et cetera, services in El Segundo, and two, provide staff in a potential pilot program, including coordination with the South Bay Council of Government, South Bay COG, fiscal impact, three thousand dollars. Um, one of the, um, one of the vendors might be considered, has done business with one of my companies in the past, so I'm gonna step out on this matter. Mayor Protem?
Greg, you're gonna?
Yes, Samaras, Principal Planner will be making this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. Uh, this, uh, for you tonight is a date to something you considered, uh, last summer. Specifically, shared mobility, shared mobility services. Uh, last summer, um, the city engaged in an experiment in, uh, shared mobility. At the end of June, the company birthed and later, uh, lined up around thirty of their scooters, uh, in and around the town area. They made them available for rent and use on events and, uh, other folks. After, uh, a few weeks of the, their operation in town at your August seventh meeting, uh, after hearing from the community and a report from staff, you asked the company to remove their scooters from the city, and you directed staff to, um, work on potential rules or regulations to get other cities in the area and the South Bay COG, uh, in order to potentially, uh, launch some sort of a pilot program at a later day, at a later time. of a pilot program at a later day, at a later time. At your meeting, you are in direction with regard to what these rules should contain, what issues should be addressed, and what you have on the screen above is a listing of the direction you gave staff to include adequate insurance and identification language, adequate fees, pay close attention to parking, where all these scooters and vehicles would park, address riding sidewalks, address the number of companies that were in town, number of scooters or vehicles they would have, where they would deploy, issues regarding education and safety. So since the council gave the staff that direction, we have worked with other cities in the South Bay COG on developing a common set of rules that companies could follow if they operate in the area and cities. We have had programs in other cities. As example, we studied publications, articles in national planning organizations, transportation, and then we reached out to the public and with the great cities in the COG conducted a survey at a regional level to try to gauge attitudes about shared mobility. And survey went into a little bit more depth compared to initial survey we did over the In this survey, we had, we received 220 responses from El Segundo residents, and the survey itself and the results are attached in the packet. And this slide basically some key giveaways from the survey that we conducted. First, substantial interest in your city for, in being a regional pilot program and shared mobility. There is a need to properly regulate the businesses that offer these devices for rent in our city. Some of the top concerns or issues to regulate with safe operation of these vehicles by the users, the issue of abandonment and parking of these vehicles. If you recall last summer, we noticed that the vehicles were upside, sometimes fallen over, so there definitely, we definitely learned from that experience last summer. In addition, speed was a concern. For those who were interested in participating themselves in the pilot and using the services to destinations that they would consider were leisure trips, the beach, doing errands or shopping, and actually 35% of those who said they'd use these services would consider using it for going to work. So as I said, we, we worked with other cities in the South Bay COG, and we have now developed a set of guidelines, and some of the key components of these guidelines are shown on the map. And if you may, if you notice, these components actually align well with the feedback that you gave us last summer and with the feedback that we got from the community. And we took your feedback and the residents' feedback to heart, and are better to address potential concerns and issues in drafting these guidelines. So I'll give you a few examples rather than describing everything here. For instance, with deployment, the rules or guidelines regarding deployment would require companies to submit maps of where would load their, their vehicles, scooters or bicycles in the city, how many at each location. At the same, cities, and the city of El Segundo would review those maps and ensure they don't have this sort of negative impacts that they had last summer. If you recall, last summer, there was a sense that there were too many of the vehicles in the downtown. So having requiring companies to submit a deployment plan and the city to redirect them where to locate them, you know, initially and then every day when they put them in the street, would help us control how concentrated or distributed throughout the city. In addition to telling companies where they shouldn't or where they could restrict their deployment, we would actively encourage or require that they distribute them in areas of, that are high priorities to the city, such as near the city's green lines. So that's what the deployment guidelines would help achieve. With regard to parking, earlier tonight, we heard from residents and the public talking about, well, where would these vehicles be parked? They should have specific designated spaces, and these guidelines actually help for that. Each city that would participate would have the leeway to decide where to have designated parking zones. So it's not entirely up to a user or company to say where they would park. The city would essentially approve a parking plan before a permit is issued. Rules regarding fleet size, this is a good way to regulate, to get our feet wet, let's say, to start with a low number to see how things go, and then gradually increase the number of vehicles allowed in town, so we can control those impacts and limit the negative consequences. I'm going to jump to insurance. We talked about that last summer, and we, generally with the attorney's office, our finance director, the city, and it appears that the participating cities in this are essentially tending to agree with what our staff had initially requested for that purpose. So we have confidence that there'll be sort of a common rules in that regard. A few of the examples of what is included in the guidelines that are attached to your reports, and now they are available to the public, and we actually wanted to make it public at this point, because before we finalize the guidelines, we really, really hear from the community and also from companies that may actually apply to participate in an improvement. Now, with regard to the South Bay Regional Pilots, the staff from our city and other cities and the COG have developed a proposal. It was discussed in the report. The proposal is to do this in a coordinated fashion, and the key components of this would be first, have cities then ready to participate in a regional pilot, and it's partly why we're here tonight. The second step would be to issue a request for qualifications from shared mobility companies, and those companies would respond to the request for qualifications. Now, the South Bay COG offered to help in that effort, but taking the draft, drafting that RFQ on behalf of the cities, there are advantages to doing that in a coordinated fashion, and they also intend to maintain a role in coordinating evaluation of the responses, and then to have a, have a after the pilot is potentially launched. So going back to evaluation, so staff from our city and other cities, participating cities and the South Bay COG would evaluate their responses to RFQs, and then rank the most responsive companies, the companies that address those guidelines, the permits and the RFQ, that address them the best. And at that point, participating cities would invite the top ranking companies, those companies that have been vetted, you know, to apply permits, greater than each participating city. At that, the city staff would go into more detail and determine, you know, those precise parking locations, the precise deployment areas, the high priority areas, the restricted zones operated by the city, the details about the fleet size, all those details at the city level. So there'll be some guidelines, but each city would be able to make specific arrangements on how to handle those permits. And beyond that, permits would be issued and a pilot program would be launched. As I mentioned, that's not the end of the process. During the process, obviously, we would evaluate it on an option basis. The South Bay COG has offered to continue helping cities to coordinate and evaluating how the pilot is going, in addition to maintain data at a regional level, so that the COG can make some decisions, recommendations for regional policy. But that would be essentially the process for launching a South Bay Regional Pilot. I mentioned the COG's role, and the COG has made a request to, to participating cities to help fund their, their, in this, in this pilot program, number one, and the RFQ, evaluating responses, and then after the potential launch, to continue helping the city's coordination, evaluation of the program, data at a region-wide basis. The cost that the COG estimated was $3,000 per participating city. If this, this school agrees to participate, to opt in, in those costs, we anticipate that that initial cost would be made up by application permit fees that the participating companies would pay when they come to apply permits. So if the council directs us to continue in this process and to opt into the regional pilot, the next steps look a little bit like this. We will take inputs from the public right now, so that we make sure we capture everybody's attitudes and ideas, so from the public and also from these companies, so that we finalize the guidelines. Then we would work with South Bay COG, draft and release an RFQ. We would like to bring back an ordinance, the council made some amendments to the municipal code to kind of address regulating shared mobility services and these vehicles, and also to bring back a resolution with recommended fees for this type of program. Next, we would continue, as I mentioned earlier, staff level, work on some of the details before any permits are issued, such as where they will park exactly, where they will be deployed, what the best should be. And we will, of course, come to the city council with updates when we request them, but definitely before the city is ready to comment to companies. And with that, our recommendation is respectful to you, direct staff to opt in to a regional pilot program in partnership with other South Bay cities and the COG, share in the cost of the South Bay COG coordinating, direct us to bring back an ordinance, setting regulations in the municipal code and setting fees for this type of program. That concludes our presentation.
Any comments?
So I guess just to frame the issue, if there is any pursuit, we recommend this approach. We think this is a good approach. But tonight's really about getting the council's interest in, do you want us to move forward with, with trying this again on a pilot basis? We would recommend partnering with the other, with the COG and the other South Bay cities.
Other cities jumped into this yet?
We've been closely with other cities, the city of Manhattan Beach, Hermosa.
The council's taken action yet?
Their councils have not taken action, but each of the cities is planning to do, take an item to the council within the next month or so. So Hermosa Beach will do that, do that, I believe, in the next week, and Manhattan Beach and Redondo Beach will follow in April.
How many, I'm sorry. We can be first in the COG to jump in then, right? Do this now?
We would essentially lead in this, in this manner, but we would not necessarily launch a pilot if, let's say, other cities don't intend to participate. So we hope that by opting in, other cities will join El Segundo, and we have indications from their staff that they, that they, that they will, although this is not a guarantee, obviously. And then if we have a core of cities, especially the cities that are contiguous next door to each other, I believe, and we believe, a pilot has a chance of succeeding.
Does it have any guideline for, for how many have to opt in before it makes sense to, to move forward with a pilot program? Is there, if it's two, is it three, that, that, I mean, yes, what causes the next tumbler i- in the, in the machine to spin forward? What drops that? Is it two, is it three, is it four?
There is no magic number, but I have to say that if one city does it by itself, the chances of success are lower. It's, it's better than more cities participate and the closer they are geographically. That way, users who don't necessarily know what city boundaries are or where they are can go from town to town, from city to city, and be allowed to operate in the next, for example, along Rosecrans, which is just the battery between Manhattan Beach and El Segundo, and envision people working in one, just going across the street, you know, a whole block to the next city to get lunch or something. If we don't have the two cities authorizing companies to operate, you could have a problem. They wouldn't be able to succeed. I hope I'm kind of conveying that clearly.
No, I think that probably what is valuable data for us is that if, if we set some parameters and said we would like to opt in and participate, and then, use the Hermosa example, Hermosa says yes, Manhattan says no, or it just never gets agendized, does this dot?
We would review that at that point, yes. We would review that. So we would see who has opted in in the next couple of months, and potentially report back to you with a recommendation on that.
Because that could be one of the commercial concerns that we heard in public comment, that the relative appetite for this in, as the participation band might be higher than another, and it just sort of gets kicked into this sort of bureaucratic minutia and never happens. That may be valid if we decide it is something that if no one agendizes this in a month, and we like the idea, do we look at going it alone for something that may be limited in scope but applies to El Segundo writ all as opposed to a region writ large?
If you wish, we can come back to you in a month or two months, back to you, how many cities have opted in, and then perhaps make a decision at that point, which is essentially what we intended to do. Of course, we would not launch a pilot, come back to you to let you know what's going on.
I was just looking at the data from your survey, and it says, would you support a regional South Bay bike share program? 40% said yes, 29% said question, would you support a regional South Bay scooter share program? Only 43% yes, 44% said no. And then the other question, how would you likely use a bike or scooter share program? And 56% said never to infrequently. So I'm not sure if our residents really have an appetite for the program, yet a bike share program is something that they might be open to. So I'm not sure, you know, pardon?
220.
220.
This would be open to any, any mobility platform, could be somebody with, with unicycles. It doesn't sort of respect.
The intent is to have electric scooters, bicycles, electric bicycles, perhaps to start with, although the device come along.
Desperate to see unicycles, desperate.
I did see, I did see one.
A bear on a unicycle.
Back to Mayor Protam's comment, yeah, there is a difference in the attitudes between a bike share program and a scooter share program, which is exactly why we asked the question, to see whether there's a significant difference between the two modes.
If we provided guidelines for how we would like to participate in this, do we have the ability to say, you know, we're having the ability to say, you know, we're having three bike lanes painted in with sharrows and we are simultaneously narrowing El Segundo Boulevard, does it make a difference if it was scooters or bicycles? If you said, look, bicycles are safe to be on El Segundo Boulevard, we do not allow you to have scooters on El Segundo Boulevard because the profile of the vehicle is smaller. Do we have that latitude?
Yes, at city level, can determine where we wish these devices to operate. We can restrict areas, or we encourage, we can encourage areas where it should be deployed. And that's something that we would go into more detail.
I just want to add, we can, what Paul means is that we can regulate where they're deployed, where they are left, picked up, but we can't, today, we couldn't, if someone's riding one in the street, going the correct direction and riding it legally, we couldn't stop them. So we can just, we can regulate where they're parked. What is the, there is a speed limit on the scooters?
Fifteen.
I thought the law.
Well.
Streets thirty-five miles.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry, they can go on streets up to thirty miles an hour, and I think the scooters will go up to about twenty, but there are cities that, that are putting corners on those to keep the, the speed down.
Yeah.
And in the criteria, we have the ability to set that they're prioritizing, let's say we wanted the drop zones to only be on private property and not to utilize public bike racks, we can prioritize the criteria?
Yes, we can, we can, the city level. My personal opinion is that we may have to accept some parking on sidewalks initially, and then over time, develop and identify more parking spaces on private property or on, at public abilities, and/or potentially the street.
So one of the biggest complaints I got was people that I know that are in wheelchairs, that drive on the scooters in town, and these bikes prevent them from, and they actually had to stop downtown because of these scooters being left, the area that were designated, because the sidewalks that, that had a cutaway for the handicap is basically where everyone was leaving, because it was an area that they could dump the scooter. So, you know, I actually had two people I know intentionally not coming down because of these scooters.
Absolutely.
So I just, I haven't, it hasn't really been addressed very well, hopefully it would be, and just, it's one thing we have to be cognizant of.
It's currently addressed in the draft lines, there are restrictions on where, even allowed on the sidewalk, on where they should be parked on a sidewalk. And specifically when it comes to those ramps at street corners, a specific clearance requirement, so that they're a certain number of feet away from those corners when they're parked. Limitations can tighten if need be, the individual city level.
I mean, I think the participant in this, the drop piece is, is a key part of the dynamic, and probably unfortunately for anyone who participates in this, the people with whom we had an experience with before did not benefit of the data on that. So there'll be people walking in, you know, receiving the wrath of people with whom they did not previously have failed. But the drop zone element, do we know or have a sense of, of how we are going to mandate the people who retrieve and charge rechargeable vehicles? So if these things are electric bikes or electric scooters or my electric unicycles, the people who go collect at night, do we know what we are requiring of them, to cover those individuals?
A couple of ways, there's a requirement of, to disclose whether the contractors picking up those scooters or bicycles. Also, a requirement to give cities a description of their policies and training for all those engaged in those activities, so we can get a better comfort that they will follow certain standard procedures, they will not block traffic, things of that sort. Now with regards to coverage, I think you're going to ensure indemnification. There is language in the insurance and indemnification section that addresses that. As I mentioned earlier, these are still drafted, we're still soliciting input, and there'll be some fine tuning, but we are aware of that particular concern and we will try, try and make sure that this is protected.
Because I love talking about this, I'll say, we had this, we were looking for a lot of data about movement from the city to the west side, and as we peeled back that, there realistically was no data, that all of these were being dropped west CH until the very, very end, where the second participants started playing the line. But I think there is a great deal, or was a great deal of interest in, if the valid means of conveyance from our business population to areas west CH, as I read this and we can govern deployment plan, we can enshrine that in, and we need to have a certain number or quantity of these vehicles in these parts of our business quarter.
Absolutely, and that is how it is drafted, and that's what we intend to do at staff level when we dig down to those details.
Paul, has there been any discussion regarding whatever companies are chosen or identified as being the top companies by the, by the, has there been any discussion that you know of regarding those having to have representatives on the ground during deployment? Or are we just talking, you described deployment as that simply just the number of scooters and where they're going to be deployed? Or a strategic plan, because, you know, going back in my mind ten months ago, we kept asking, like, where are the people, you know, on the street, you know, the education component? Where are, where are the people from these companies? They're, you know, independent contractors, drivers, pickers, getting in car accidents with residents in town, and so on and so forth. I mean, there's, this is not something that I think anyone on this dais would take lightly, but it's question of humans on the ground during the deployment.
Obviously, there will be humans on the ground during the deployment, are you saying?
From companies.
Yeah.
You know, the way this, these companies work is the people that deploy them don't report to the company. Technically, if that person that's deploying it does something wrong, the company has no liability to it. That's what we experienced in a car accident.
There's a.
I think that's one of the issues. Well, and some of the companies that are involved in this are also involved in litigation about what are independent contractors and employees. From our perspective as a city, I don't think we care what they call them, we want to know that we're protected and, and we have insurance. And really residents, that these people, whatever they're calling, that there's some insurance there in case to get in accidents and whatnot, residents. That is something we're, we're looking at, and how much pushback we'll get from them on that kind of coverage. I don't think we know for certain yet, but we've raised the issue.
Yeah, and if I may add, some of the cities that have programs, currently active programs, there, there is a tendency for some of the companies to include more employees in these types of, I'm afraid I don't know of an exact mix at this, actual employees and contractors. So I, I see, when I look at other cities' programs, indicators that there is kind of a preference towards having employees do some of this work. The guidelines as drafted ask these companies to explain who will do the deployment, who will be employees, contractors, what is that mix? And how they are, what policies or procedures they are supposed to follow. All of that will be seen to our approval before we issue a permit to a company.
Two questions. Question one, if we agree to join the South Bay cog to work forward on this, and the other cities subsequently vote on it and say, and say you want to work on this, and the cog says, okay, here, you know, we're going to get our plan, and I'll get, because it can't be this guy, it's going to be that guy, right? With the cog, this, on this item, fights for the details that we want in it, but the overall agreement is that the rules are somewhat vague. We lock ourselves into whatever they pass, or can we come and completely chop up whatever regulations or framework that they send us? Hey, we're going to take your framework and we're going to add on twenty additional regulations.
Yeah. If I can, you refer, you refer to it as their framework, but keeping in mind that the cog is really the combination of cities, and I personally am the representative that has been, other cities on coming up with these draft, and do at these meetings is represent all our staff, and I've met with our staff in the city attorney's office, public works department, parent offense department, to establish our priorities, and we relay those to the cities, to the other cities' representatives, so, so they come up with some common rules. Yeah, so in the end, they're the common denominator, let's say, and then when it comes to some of the details, then each city can make individual decisions. But if, so that's kind of what we've been trying, so to answer your question, we will not be locked in, it'll be that we actually produce together with other cities, that at the same time, beyond the guidelines themselves, we would have a lot of latitude to regulate specifics, such as, like I said, the deployment, specific parking locations with the city, the sizes, and so forth.
Second question, this time last year we were talking about this, Long Beach was about to roll out their own scooter program with, as the company, and in one of the presentations that there was, you know, areas on the ground where it's like, is there any studies or follow-ups from that, the success, the success, anything that you've seen?
Okay, I have sort of concrete data on that. I only spoke to a colleague from the city of Culver City where they're doing their own pilot program, they initiated in the summer, and it's a six-month-long program, and they told me just earlier that they did not have significant issues in that regard or in general in the, in the last six months, and they anticipate in the next few days to extend their pilot program. In addition to that, I want to point out that we also intend to do what you described just a moment ago, to identify specific locations where these vehicles would park. It'll be probably at the starting point, but over, during the course of pilot, we would identify more and more locations, we can funnel those scooters and bikes to specific locations, and that way they're not in the way they were the way they were last summer.
I don't have any more questions.
Yeah.
Dawn's ready to do business.
Yeah, I'm ready to vote.
You want to mention Dawn?
I know.
Was that your motion or was that your vote? I'm sorry.
So anyone, anyone interested in moving forward or?
I, I would move that we opt in, and I would put a coda on that, that if no one else's agenda made a decision in our second, or the, the meeting in the week of April, that we revisit the topic.
I'll second that.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I haven't said aye yet. I'll say aye. So we sit, and all opposed is no. So by, you're, you're going to back by when, April?
Our meeting in the third Tuesday of April.
Sixteen.
Okay. Okay. Four zero. And just for clarification, just because we're opting at this juncture does not mean we're moving forward, this is being it to see if the other cities have vested interest in joining us and having some dialogue about it, but there's no way guaranteed that we are going to move forward.
Sure.
I'd have to tackle it in the action report and verify in the minutes, that there's no way, shape, or form lock us in to saying yes to having scooters again. I just want to be clear.
This is just exploratory, and it's really only a lit, test to see if the other cities are really willing to explore it with us, and this is a, and we at any given time, you know, we're not, we're just, we're not moving forward.
Yes. Thank you.
Unless there's unicycles.
Unless there's unicycles. All right, now we, now we need to have Mr. Boyd come back.
I hope they can extend the minutes too, Mona. Unless there's unicycles.
Unless there's unicycles.
Invite Drew back.
Come on, Drew. Should we take a minute? Does anyone need a five minute?
I could, you could use Tripp to voice room.
Okay, let's take a five minute, we'll come back at nine forty-five.
Session with item five. Consideration impossible recommended by the environmental committee to adopt a resolution opposing offshore drilling, including opposing new oil and activities off the California coast pursuant to the federal government's proposed eighteen through twenty twenty-four national outer continental shelf program fiscal impact none. And present is environmental committee chair Tracy Miller Zarniki. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, mayor pro tem, city council persons. I will keep this short and sweet as I can, but it's a very important topic. Do not make my day way less on you. I know you've already got a lot of documentation, so I'm not going to reiterate all of that. I'm going to have a short summary, just for those who have not had the chance to read it along diligently as you. Offshore drilling comes with great risk, coastal community from both an environmental and economic perspective. Obviously, I'm focused on the environmental side. And considering the oil spills, I know this wants to have our marine life more challenged than it already is. Certainly don't want to find dead fish, birds or dolphins on our beaches. We want our surfers and wave playing children covered in crude. Certainly the tourism, fishing and recreation industries with environmental concerns from their own economic perspective. The U S Department of the Interior's twenty seventeen through twenty-two outer continental shelf leasing program contained no restrictions on offshore drilling along the Pacific coast. In April twenty eighteen, a presidential executive order threatened to reopen the Pacific coast to expand offshore oil and gas drilling, placing invaluable ocean resources and coastal economies at risk. Resolution here tonight establishes that the city of El Segundo is that opening of our coastline to such exploitation. Nancy mentioned here, at this time, there are ninety west coast municipalities and three hundred and thirty in the nation. All of our, our governors included have made official resolutions, proclamations, statements, et cetera, in support of such protections. The more municipalities adopt resolutions, the stronger the voice of protection for our coast, our livelihoods and our future. Yes, there are federal waters beyond our California jurisdiction, but proactive opposition is a strong actor. And whether anyone makes such an attempt to affect our coastline in a detrimental way, a way that also works in direct contrast to the current mandates to pioneer clean renewable energy and greenhouse gas action efforts. And for those of you wondering how our biggest business in current day El Segundo, that very same big organization for the creation of our city feels, I can tell you that Chevron has no future plans to do any offshore drilling along our coastline. Which means we are not throwing them for a loop with this endeavor. In fact, just launched a massive initiative in the coast, the central to commission platforms that they once owned dating back to the mid eighties, which is a multi-billion dollar effort. So they're putting their money where their mouth is and they are not interested in doing this anyway. On January seventh, twenty nineteen, the El Segundo Environmental Committee unanimously approved the creation and presentation of this resolution. We think Ken, Jasmine and the staff in Works for shepherding the proper channels here at city hall and for the time of our city attorney and the legal team for polishing our proposed draft. And I'm here now to recommend adoption of this important protectionary document by you, honorable city council.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarniki. Any questions while Tracy's here? Okay, so. See here. I'd like to move adopting the resolution as previously mentioned.
Second.
Can we just briefly?
Sure.
And, and I say this because this, see this doesn't cost anything because we can't do anything. But when we talk about governance, uh, we tend to wring our hands in the teeth about overreach of Sacramento, where it tells us how and where to build our houses, whether or not people can deliver marijuana in our city, and whether we can drink beer in specific places during the art walk. And in the name of, this is overreaching the other direction, right? This is an area where clearly we do not have jurisdiction, right? And we clearly pay taxes to pay salaries to do, right? This is Ted Lou's job. Is Harris's job. This is Bernhardt, the secretary of state. And this is Autumn Burke's job. And this is Ben Allen's job. So. The state of California clearly owns the public land out, out in there and beyond the federal government jurisdiction. So, you know, we can overreach and take a policy position and again, it costs us, costs us. But in the name of good governance, it's clearly in the division of labor, not pensions, police and pavement. And that's what local government does. First city council meeting, someone sat up there and told us that we were talking about Afghanistan and Iraq. You know, we can do that. It's just not great governance and we can vote on Crimea if we want. It just doesn't have anything to do with price of milk. So. Again, it costs us. I just like the point to be made in the name of good governance of our lane.
Thank you, councilor. Any further comments? Yeah, actually again.
I feel that this is an opportunity for our city. Those who live here who care about our city and our coast and environments for today and for tomorrow. This is our opportunity at no cost to say, we do care about this. We don't want to see this happen. And if it came down to a federal something, this adds to the voice of people who care about what our coastline is like here in our community and will add to that voice against any such drilling.
I think just worth noting that the representative that changed that initiative is not for this body. The representative of the assembly for the state issue and obviously for Congress and for the federal government. So again, it's not, I mean, this is not, we can, we can go forth on the way this project works, but again, I mean, it costs us nothing. We may all agree in principle that this is a vacuum silly program. The federal government that's for political ends and not likely lively lead to a single going anywhere. That, that notwithstanding, just don't think it's good business. Out of our lane.
All right, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We'll call for all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five oh.
We can all jump in the volcano together. It's great.
All right, item six. Action recommended by the environmental committee to adopt a resolution opposing state legislation to maintain local control of energy solutions in opposition to the zero emissions building and sources of heat and energy. Energy will impact none. Also Tracy Miller Zarniki.
I'm back. Again, I'll keep this as brief. Ten, uh, Assembly Bill thirty-two thirty into law by Governor Jerry Brown in twenty eighteen. AB thirty-two thirty-two requires the California Energy Commission to how to reduce greenhouse gases from commercial and residential buildings forty percent below nineteen ninety levels by twenty-third. As a document, bill only requires study on this matter. There is language original bill to mandate that all new construction of commercial residential buildings be equipped with only electric appliances. Over, the original would have mandated that half of all existing buildings be retrofitted to electric appliance. That is a lengthy list of things, including but not limited to stoves of barbecue grills, water heaters in our homes and any gas powered cooking appliance in restaurants. We on the environmental committee and other future minded individuals would agree that it is critical that greenhouse gas emissions be reduced globally. But there are ways to achieve the same emission reductions without such sweeping technology mandate. Telling everybody what to do in their own homes, inconveniencing everyday use. There are solutions that can utilize renewable natural gas and solar renewable hydrogen. And we would like that to know that our city residents and businesses can be open to these options and also that might be on the horizon, just around the corner. The resolution would establish a position for the city to support local energy choice to the benefit of its residents and businesses and oppose sweeping mandates such as original version of AB thirty-two thirty-two. It would support other emission strategies or discourage the voluntary turnover to electronic appliances. On January eleventh, twenty nineteen, the environmental unanimously approved the creation and presentation of this resolution. And again, board of Ken, Jasmine, um, our, the attorney and his staff. We present this tonight with our recommendation of adoption.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarniki. Okay, any comments, questions or concerns?
I can comment as an observation. EB thirty-three thirty-two. I just find it interesting that it's targeting appliances in the household, which apparently or historically, I should say historically, females used the laundry, the cook. They're not addressing things that the male population historically liked lawn mowers, blowers. So I just, interesting that thing that what's targeted is that females would be, um, would be by having to go to electric because, you know, it'd be costly. So now the women would have to then go to the laundromat to do their, to do their, dry their clothes. So I just have to think beyond like, I, I mean, I'm against overreach by our state legislature. But I'm also kind of interested in just understanding what all the appliances that are really targeted here, here are historically female associated appliances.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Anything else? Someone like to make a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Zero? Great. Thank, thank you. All right. We move on to item seven. Consideration and poll action recommended by the library board regarding implementation of a fine forgiveness month at El Segundo Public Library, beginning Monday, April first, twenty nineteen and ending Tuesday, April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. For purposes of removing barriers to library services and allowing the El Segundo Public Library recover library materials which may not otherwise be returned for use to their customers. Fiscal impact at El Segundo Public Library's average monthly revenue from overdue fines and fees is six hundred and sixty-six dollars. In addition, libraries estimate that ten thousand dollars in overdue fees could be waived during fine forgiveness month. The lost revenue is offset to some of the return overdue materials. It also must be recognized that a significant of the lost revenue would never have been collected. And here to present is library trustee, Christie Sherrill. Thank you.
The El Segundo Public Library is a civic and cultural hub for information and innovation where big and small ideas take off. Maintain comfortable, safe and welcoming public and libraries. Connect people of all ages to information, experiences and ideas to help them learn and be successful. That's the mission statement at El Segundo Public Library. But we all know there's, there's one thing associated libraries, especially if you have small children, and that's fines. Fortunately, sometimes it becomes punitive. Our goal is to make accessing library books and services as easy and accessible as possible for children's teens and adults. We are proposing a fine forgiveness month. A one-time event for overdue fines to be eliminated at the request of a library customer and for books to be returned with no questions asked. We want all of our library privileges at our schools to encourage El Segundo youth reading and seeking in our libraries again and be able to participate in the very popular reading program. Fines are sometimes incurred on school campuses due to no fault of the student. Time amnesty will bring materials and patrons back into our libraries.
Thank you, Christie. We have the library director, Melissa McCullough.
Thank you. So a few numbers to highlight as, as we're continuing to talk about access to libraries. Seventy percent of voters visited their library in the past year. Eight in ten Americans believe public libraries some find reliable and trustworthy information. Sixty percent of Americans think libraries help them grow as people. And public libraries remain a critical part of the social infrastructure that binds communities together. And one, over two hundred and twenty-seven thousand people visited the El Segundo Public Library past fiscal year. So I was not surprised when Swink requested that the board of trustees consider the impact of overdue fines as the board. Right, there's a picture of you.
There's the culprit right there.
Right.
All the later.
He is one of our best, best, uh, best supporters, but, um, so yeah, I wasn't surprised.
Can we zoom in on those titles? Can we see what we got there?
So again, I wasn't surprised when Christie requested the library board of trustees consider the impact of overdue library fines as the board at El Segundo Public Library have embarked on an effort to eliminate barriers to library services in order to enhance customer service management. And as a reminder, the, uh, the city council did eliminate DVD rental fees last year. And our publication of our movies more than tripled in the following quarter. So programs that do have minimal revenue impact at the same as having significant impact on making materials and services more accessible to patrons is essential for ensuring lifelong learning in the community. Although overdue fines and fees have traditionally been a factor for public libraries in America, a growing number of libraries nationwide, the San Diego Public Library, San Mateo County Library and Denver Public Library have made news by eliminating charges for late, late rich library material. In order to increase patron access to materials and services, reduce the inequitable impact of overdue fines and patron relations with the library and optimize staff time and efficiency. Many other public libraries are creating fine free card categories for patrons such as kids and teens, actively military personnel and veterans. A majority of libraries also accept other ways to satisfy fines without monetary payment such as youth reading food drives where you bring in food, uh, in exchange for fines, which is donated to food banks or fine forgiveness periods. The library board of trustees recommends a first step of offering a fine forgiveness month at El Segundo Public Library April of twenty nineteen to improve access to our libraries and services. The small sampling of libraries listed here represents a much larger list of all of the public libraries that have offered similar programs in the last years. And if you look closely, you'll see different sized libraries as well as representatives from all sections of the United States. So fines for overdue library materials equate to less than one percent of library services management's annual budget totaling approximately twenty thousand dollars a year. As the mayor said, one thousand six, six thousand, uh, one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars per month. But when youth encounter fines on their accounts and are unable to pay them, an impediment created and no longer able to enjoy the privileges associated with library access. Staff at Richmond Street School and New York Street School report regular occurrences, students unable to check out books during class visits due to their fines. This recurring situation discourages kids from using libraries, obviously opposite of what, what we're going for. And just last, seven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight students participated in two hundred and three visits at our El Segundo school libraries. So currently, two percent of children's accounts are four hundred and eighty children are because of overdue fines and that number is higher than. library access because of overdue fines, and that number is higher than, than I would have expected. Now, there is a possibility that some of the youth pay outstanding fines. Historically, in El Segundo and in library systems across the nation, fines are paid, and young patrons or their caregivers simply choose to stop using the system. It's heartbreaking for library staff to hear parents tell their kids that they can check out books because the, the adults are afraid of, of the additional ones that will be. In addition, six percent of all adult library accounts at El Segundo Public Library or seven hundred and sixty-one adults are from checking out, due to overdue library fees. And over five of those blocked have been unused during the pass-through, pass-through, so the fees do matter. A one-month fine forgiveness period, library customers should return overdue materials without paying fees, and outstanding overdue materials be removed from their accounts. In addition, destroying library access for patrons of all ages, the public library will recover eligible library materials which may not, which may otherwise be returned for use by other patrons. And all materials eligible for forgiveness during this one-time special event, the exception of damaged, unusable, or lost items, and additionally, there would be no re-imposition for previously paid fines or fees. So the recommended action is timed to coincide with National Library Week, which will be celebrated from April seventh, thirteenth this year, with a special gathering open to all at the El Segundo Public Library on Thursday, April eleventh, at eight AM. Is you available to answer questions or try to provide more detailed questions helpful as you make your decision?
To your knowledge, have we had a fine forgiveness period in the past?
Not that I'm aware of. And I did check with some of, some of the surveying staff. I don't remember one either.
And the fine forgiveness areas that you showed there, what does that mean? That they have a month of returning, or that they just never charge fines?
So that list, they have at least done the fine forgiveness program. It could be a week, it could be a month, be targeted for particular groups, but they've all, all done some portion of the program. There is a, a growing list of, of libraries that have completely fine-free as well.
There are.
And interesting, a lot that have gone fine-free just for children, some dating back to the nineteen seventies.
And then our connection here at the city library is, is very unique, wouldn't you say?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's, yeah. Great, great connection.
I have a question. To get the fine forgive, forgiven, does a person have to come in?
So.
Because I was worried about the children. I mean, do we want to just make a budget fee forgiveness for the children, but for adults, have them ask for forgiveness? I feel like they still won't ask.
So, so my plan, if it was approved, would shout to school library staff and have them protect all the, all the cards that are blocked and really use this as an opportunity to get those cards standing. Be proactive with the children's accounts and then advertise widely the opportunity. But our idea would be, you know, anything that comes back during April will be automatically, but then adults would need to come in to waive the prior fees.
I feel like there's a Seinfeld about this.
There is. I almost showed a clip.
Fantastic. I think we should do the fine forgiveness month. I think that's wonderful. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, we give this fine forgiveness fee a try here, but let's see how it works.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll second that. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
All right, consent agenda. Any polls?
I'm pulling nine.
Number nine, okay, which is minutes, okay.
From the fifth.
Oh, I'm pulling thirteen.
Fifteen.
Thirteen.
What do you say?
I pull thirteen.
All right, so we, we're pulling nine, thirteen. So do I, do I have a motion to approve eight, ten, eleven, twelve, and fourteen?
Move?
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay. Item nickel.
I would actually like to jump right in and just make a motion. I have a question on a potential correction because City Clerk Weaver is not here. I'd rather not go to Mona and say, well, did Tracy remember? Because Mona is Tracy. So I would just like to continue this item to the next meeting's agenda so that we can discuss, discuss it, because there's going to be an item on that same agenda that's going to discuss the, a portion of the items that I do not believe are, are actually depicted.
Okay, we can do that, Mark, right? You want to make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to continue this item to our next regularly.
I'll get that. All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. All right, item thirteen, Chris. Or did I skip one?
No.
No, it was just those two, right? Yeah, okay.
The consideration of possible action regarding an updating implementation of city's social host ordinance, fiscal impact none. Chief, would you like to tell us about the high-pressure situations we faced with our social?
Chief, Mayor, to date since implementation, we have not had any instances where necessitated a writing of the social host ordinance fine or implementation of the fine.
I don't have questions on it. I just want to know that, you know, what theme of the night has, has been overreached in every election? We overreached into our houses and told them we could help, and we've come to find that they didn't need that help after all, and they're doing okay with their kids. That's all. Can never prove a negative. Can never prove a negative.
Do you want to move approval? Probably not.
No. I'll move to approve, receive, receiving.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're five oh on that one, Mona. Okay. Let's see. Number, number fifteen. Consideration and possible action regarding council consensus to cancel Tuesday. Oh, yeah. I'm not giving that. Just kidding. Mark?
Yes, I'll pass.
Continue now? All right, under City Clerk, item fifteen. Action and possible action regarding council consensus to cancel the Tuesday, April second, twenty-nine, city council meeting, fiscal impact none.
All in favor?
Well, yeah. A lot of us, kids, well, majority of us have kids in school still and it's a school break that week, so. Someone made a question? You did?
I'm so moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, five oh. Item sixteen. Consideration and possible action to introduce an ordinance amending section one-one, four dash four, A of the El Segundo Municipal Code to change the running of city councils held on the first and third Tuesday of every calendar month, time from five o'clock PM to four o'clock PM for closed session, and interviews or appointments for committees, boards, and commissions' conference room, and change the beginning time of the seven o'clock PM to the six o'clock PM in the council chamber for all other matters addressed in open session. Fiscal impact none. So we talked about the last council meeting, and the recommended staff has introduced and waived the first reading of the ordinance. Someone want to move approval of that?
I'll move approval.
Great. Second.
Actually, I'll be introduction of the ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code, section one dash four dash four A relating to city. This will be back at your April sixteenth council meeting for a second read and potential adoption.
Thank you, Mark.
Approval.
Oh, yeah, thanks, yeah. Okay, so we had a, you.
Second.
Okay.
All right. Well, I'll just.
Yeah, great. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that what it means?
That's it.
Someone disagreed to move it forward.
Okay.
So, see, I, yeah, I do. So the meeting on April sixteenth, what time would that start?
Five o'clock.
Okay. And then the next meeting would start at four?
Probably the one after that.
It's thirty days.
Thirty days.
Okay, just let me know when you need me down here.
By the end of summer.
All right, I think we're good then. All right, so report, City Treasurer, anyone from that department, City Council members. Councilmember Piment.
I would just like to thank the staff right here, especially Paul Samarison and the work that the S C did. You know, there was a lot of input, angry, and concern about the way mobility played out previously, and that staff report and the report together addressed pointedly every single concern. Now, it may not satisfy everyone, but every single point was clearly heard, convinced they never to address it, and that is not an easy thing to pursue when you deal with a consortium of different cities. So I think that I would just like to add to that.
Thank you, Chris. Councilmember Nickel.
Is this the time where I would authorize that item as much as, and in that same breath, ask the public to please not rehash all the public comment all over again?
I think you did, and we will make sure that happens.
Thank you. And then I do want to report Carol attended the groundbreaking of the APM, the People Mover at LAX Law Center, and LA, their presentation, Janice Hahn spoke, other people spoke. There's a lot of big things potentially happening to our north, and I think it's very important that the citizens of El Segundo understand what is happening. They have ears, they do some research, and then they voice their opinion to us, their elected representatives, so that we can be your voice in the world. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Scott. Councilmember Bren.
I'm looking forward to my upcoming police ride-alongs. I have one next Sunday during the day in the morning, and then I'm going to schedule one in, in the evening, as long as no dogs are involved, because I've trapped before. They stink and they're noisy. But I'd recommend a ride-along so you can get out on the streets and see what officers go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Mayor Tim Pirstuck.
Yeah, I just wanted to wish Barbie a birthday. It was her sixtieth birthday last Saturday, and I was able to, we were invited to go and to their celebration. Lovely event where all the people, the employees of Mattel got together and sang Barbie. It was a kind of nice event. I also can thank the city staff and El Segundo High School for participating in Civic Day. We had fifty high school seniors come here and shadow MMBs throughout, throughout the city, including the three of us on the council. And one of the projects, the project that we have empowered, look at is the teen center. What's going to happen is each one of the, they're going to participate as a, as a and come up with some options and ideas on how to improve the teen center. And then they're going to align, partner with assigned city employee, and they're, they're going to come on a second date, and they're going to pitch their ideas to the mock council, and hoping that we'll get some really good ideas to improve the teen center.
That's great. A little bit different. Last time was great too, but this time they actually have a real teen center. That's great.
Trying to understand how city attorney was going to allow that to happen when that could potentially be an idea for your agenda of ours. I mean, I, I get that, advising the sit-in council people, but it seems like we're playing fire there a little bit?
Parks want to adopt it and make, they could bring their parks from, who then.
Council did authorize budget money for renovation of the teens. We've made that decision, at least that part is safe. What specifically we're vating is a council decision.
Right. But it's good to get some input from the teens because it is a teen center, and better than adults coming up with an idea for the teen center, we should have the teens in the community with that idea.
So I think it's just important that on that day, we, we don't really voice our opinion to teens on what we think to ask, like, just kind of let them be.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's actually what's got the, the, asked, asked, Lee said that.
Yeah.
Hey, I have nothing this evening to add. Public communication.
No one left.
See, no. We are adjourning at ten.